Klein, Niss, Price, Scharf, Schmidt, Shepherd. Six present.
Niss here.
Seven.
All right. I saw Karen. Do you want to just -- there she is. Eight present. Who are we missing?
Larry.
Larry's here too. Larry's here too. All right. You want to -- we have a presentation from the library.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm Monique Lacange Zizenhenny, the library director. And tonight I have with me some representatives from the staff, including Jenny Jordan, who is the Youth Services Manager, so she manages the children's library and youth services throughout the system; Cheryl Lee, who is the -- is a senior librarian working on a special project doing outreach to the community and to schools; and Jessica Goodman, who's also a senior librarian who works on technology projects. And I wanted to take this opportunity to demonstrate or give you some examples of what we've been working on. Main Library closed in May. Mitchell Park has been in a temporary location for longer than that. And while we closed, downtown has been used more for direct library services. So we've adapted. We've -- you'll see some examples of how we're offering services and programs outside the library, how we've taken advantage of grant opportunities to expand what we offer, and additionally, how we intend to go forward. I did want to point out to all the viewers at home, if they can see them, the Read posters that are on the wall of the current council, as well as a couple of the first experiments with a couple of the previous mayors. But we -- library users will see these throughout the library system as a way to promote reading, and these are yours to take home, so please enjoy them. I do want to acknowledge one of our staff did this on when, and he did a fantastic job taking your pictures and using the Read software to create a nice promotional opportunity. The American Library Association has done this with celebrity readers for many years, and I think for the community it's nice to see familiar faces in the library. One other thing I want to mention is that tonight I have Eric Howard here. Tonight is his unofficial first night of work here. He is the new Assistant Library Director for the system. And so you will be seeing him more in relationship to library activities and programs. And he comes to us from the Queens Public Library in New York, so today is not his first day, but tomorrow. All right. So we're going to begin with a presentation about a collaborative grant project that we did with the Art Center. This is a project focused on teens, and I'd like to welcome Karen Kinsel here to make the presentation. You have no doubt seen Make X in the lobby. It will be moving soon, but here's how we got to that final outcome.
Thank you, Monique, and good evening. I'm the impostor here, representing the Art Center, not the library. But I'm really excited to share with you a little bit more about Make X. You've seen it in the lobby. You may have questions. Hopefully, many of those will be answered in this presentation. Oh goodness, and now I'm going to --
Just click on it. Click on -- no, just left click.
Sorry. So I thought a good place to start would be a definition of what Makerspaces are. It's an emerging trend in both libraries and museums. And here are a couple definitions that really help to contextualize what Makerspaces are. Modeled after hackerspaces, a Makerspace is a place where young people have an opportunity to explore their own interests, learn to use tools and materials, and develop creative projects. And the key is that it can adapt to a wide variety of uses and can be shaped by educational purposes, as well as the students' creative goals. Here's another definition. A Makerspaces are collaborative learning environments where people come together to share materials and learn new skills. They're not necessarily born out of a set of materials or spaces, but rather a mindset of community partnerships, collaboration, and creation. So for the Art Center, this started when we were closed for renovation during a period we called "On the Road," where we actually engaged the entire Art Center staff in some audience research using a design thinking methodology. And it was focused on our current key target audiences and current audience groups: teens, families, young professionals, and lifelong learners. Through the process, we actually interviewed more than 40 community members. What we heard from teens was the importance of being heard and listened to, having a voice. We also heard from teens that they wanted a creative third space, not home and not school. And we also heard about the challenges they had in getting to various areas of Palo Alto. So this was actually the problem or experience statement we created for teens. Teens need a safe and fun place to actively express themselves with their friends, because it is important to be involved in a community in which you're heard and respected. So out of this came the beginning of our project, which actually was an Institute of Museum and Library Services grant that the Art Center worked on with Monique and the library. Unfortunately, we did not receive that grant, but try, try again, we did. And we actually got a grant, thanks to Monique's excellent retooling of the proposal. We got a grant from the California State Library. And the grant funds were $67,500. And with in-kind costs and donations, it's more than $100,000 project. And it resulted in Make X. And I should mention that Make X was a title that was actually the teens came up with through the process. And it's a starter mobile Makerspace, and it premiered at the Palo Alto Art Center, and it moved to the City Hall lobby. And the intention is that it's going to move to different community centers and libraries throughout the region. So I just want to run through the goals of the project, so you have an understanding of what we're trying to accomplish. We wanted to design and develop a third place for Palo Alto middle school and high school-age teens that was a space of their own, that promotes self-directed and mentored creative expression and learning about art and technology, meets the educational and social needs of the teen audience, and through its mobile nature, encourages participation by teen audiences throughout the city. We wanted to engage teens actively in the planning process in a manner that promotes their engagement in design thinking. And we wanted to create an environment in which teen voices were heard, validated, and used to determine the final design. We wanted to contribute to the city's goal of improving the well-being of young people and contribute to the city's goal of technology in the connected city. And we also wanted to create a model project that could be replicated by other libraries and museums. So we actually worked to recruit a group of teens. We engaged 18 teens who were paid as consultants and also were volunteers. And at the very first meeting, they told us they didn't want to be called teens. So we had to figure out a different way of -- essentially, a different title. And the title we decided upon was "Designers." So our designers worked with us throughout the process. We actually started this process in April, and it's been a long process, much longer than we originally anticipated. What was really exciting is that the teens, the designers, were very diverse. So we had two from East Side Prep, we had two from Mountain View, the rest came from Palo Alto, from Pali Gun and Castileia. We had a good mix of both girls and boys, and a great mix of different interests. So we had those teens who were interested in tinkering and technology. We had a good group of teens who were interested in art and craft. We did lots of evaluation, and one of the first evaluations we did, we asked the teens what they knew about Makerspaces. And we found out that a lot of them didn't know what they were or what they did. So we realized that we needed to take them to different Makerspaces. So we did some field trips. We took the teens to the Born Lab at Castileia, the Fab Lab at Stanford. We took them to Tech Shop in San Jose, which is the picture that you see there. We also took them to the Crucible in Oakland and to the Exploratorium in San Francisco. And through this process, they were actually able to see Makerspaces in action, talk to the managers who manage the spaces, learn about what technology, what equipment, and what materials were really critical to their operations. You know, we had assumed from the onset that we were going to need a 3D printer for our Makerspace. It wasn't our decision, though. It was really the teens' decision. And through the process of talking to some of these Makerspace managers, the designers learned that they probably didn't need a 3D printer. A lot of what they heard was 3D printers aren't there yet, they take a lot of time. Buy a laser cutter. So the first part of the process was learning about Makerspaces and touring them. The second part of the process was design thinking. So the teens went through a whole design thinking process in which they learned and explored the needs of their users, which were other teens. Then they worked on brainstorming, both learning experiences and equipment and furniture for the space. And then they started to get into the fun part, which was the prototyping. So at this point in the process, they were really looking at prototyping some of the furniture elements for the space. And as you'll see from the picture here, they started small, and then our architectural partners on the project, who I'll talk about in a moment, brought in some huge sheets of corrugated materials, and the designers started to prototype life-size. Concurrent with this process, the designers were also looking at the equipment they needed for the Makerspace. They had $13,000 to spend on equipment, all grant-funded, and it was really up to them on what they would spend that on. There were two meetings that were quite arduous, in which we talked about what are we going to buy, and how are we going to buy it, and how are we going to get it here on time. And the prototypes were actually translated into drawings by our architectural partner, and then they were actually fabricated by a fabricator in Oakland. So here you'll see installation, when the fabricator rented a truck and brought all the furniture to the Art Center, and we unpacked the $13,000 worth of equipment. So as you'll see outside, we've got everything from a drill press to a sewing machine. And I just want to point out a couple of the pieces of furniture that the designers designed. One of them is this great kind of partition wall. On one side, it's a dry erase board. On the other side, it has cleats that can hold little cubby holders for scissors or for pens. When we opened, you can see here, there are the tables, which were designed to have legs that folded in, so they could be portable. And my favorite item is the ball chair. So this was primarily designed by two of our teen designers, and they were really excited about having an exercise ball as a chair. But then some of the feedback they got from their peers was, you know, that's not a really stable chair in which if you're drilling something. So basically, it's this compromise. You've got an exercise ball on top, and then you've got a stable surface underneath. And there's a little cubby underneath to put your laptop or your hoodie. So I actually want one for my office and hope to purchase one soon. In fact, I should mention that all the drawings for the furniture are actually up on the website, and it's a way for, you know, we hope that other museums and libraries can actually fabricate their own, create their own Makerspace. So Nolan Tam was one of our partners on the project, great architects based in Berkeley. And we were really inspired by their Library Lab project, which was a mobile library. So this proved to be really inspirational for our project, and they were really critical in working with the designers throughout the process. Another really important partner is Palo Alto resident Bernie Trilling, who is an educational consultant and the author, co-author, of 21st Century Skills. And Bernie worked with us throughout the process, working with the designers, and also helping us with the evaluation. Bernie, of course, is a true opponent of 21st Century Learning, the four Cs: creativity, collaboration, critical thinking, and communication, and feels strongly that our project was really critical in supporting those skills with the participating teens. This is a quote from Bernie. "Make X provides real opportunities to learn 21st century skills in an engaging, supportive, creative, student-designed, and owned space." Bernie actually says that he thinks that this is the only project of its kind in the country that was really driven by teens, created by teens for teens. So moving forward, Make X is open and free, not open right now, but on Friday afternoons and evenings from 4:00 to 7:00, and Saturdays and Sundays from 2:00 to 5:00. And the teens actually decided what our open hours were going to be. So it premiered at the Art Center. Now it's at City Hall Lobby. The last day it was open was Saturday, the 16th. It's now going to move to Coverley next week, opening at Coverley on December 6th. And our hope is that Make X will also move to Mitchell Park when it opens. So the staffing model for Make X, we have a paid scheduler who's responsible for scheduling the teen mentors. And the teen mentors work in Make X every time it's open to the public. They're trained in all the equipment, and they work with the public on training them up on the equipment. And our kind of next step in the process is to work with the teens on learning experiences in the space. The teen designers have this idea of doing some pre-made kits with projects. And the Art Center and library staff meet with the paid mentors and scheduler twice a month, and the teens actually determined that's the kind of process that they wanted to work with us on. We're going to have workshops run by mentors and other designers, and we are pulling together a volunteer advisory board of all of the designers who participated in the project. I wanted to share some of the evaluation feedback. You know, one of the intentions that we had with this project was basically to teach design thinking, so that the teen designers could use this as a tool for problem-solving. And one of the great things that we learned was that the teens felt like they did learn about design thinking and could apply it to their day-to-day lives. Just a couple quotes here. "Problem-solving skills apply to all problems, abstract and physical." And some other great quotes about the project in general. "It was fun, and I learned a lot." "They appreciated the chance to work with the Art Center. It was way more fun than they thought it would be." And then my favorite quote at the bottom. "I learned that to have a successful product, you must consider viewpoints of all individuals who will be using appreciating the project." So just in conclusion, I just wanted to highlight what a wonderful collaboration this was. I think each partner, the Art Center and the library, kind of brought our individual strengths, assets, and facilities to the table, and we hope that this can be a model for future collaborations. And for more information, you can visit the City website for Make X. And then we have a Liquid Space website that we worked with the librarians to set up, where you can actually reserve some of the key pieces of equipment. And this is our credit line, which is really important for our funder. Thank you.
Okay. So that was just one thing that we worked on. And now, let's see. Okay. I'm going to introduce Jenny Jordan, and we will just continue straight on through, so people will come up and take their place.
So good evening. So I'm Jenny Jordan, Youth Services Manager for the library. And I want to give you a little report about summer reading this year in the library. Summer reading is the biggest program that we do all year, and it now is designed to include all our customers, not just the youth, but adults as well. And as you may know, it's very important for children to keep reading over the summer. Studies show that if they don't, then their reading level may drop over the summer. It's also great for teens to give them an opportunity to read for pleasure, which is something they often don't have time to do during the school year. And now, adults get to win prizes and have special programs for reading over the summer too. Oops. So what have I done wrong? So this year, we decided to revamp our summer reading program a little bit. And we decided that we would like to have a more unified approach with the same program for children, teens, and adults, the same brochure, signing up at the same time, and we introduced family sign-ups. We also tried to have some inclusive programs, which would be for all the family. And the other thing that we did was change our evaluation slightly and use some outcome measurement. So we still, of course, collected statistics, the numbers, which we've been doing for a long time. And as usual, we had more people sign up this year. But we decided we wanted to try a new evaluation, outcomes measurement. And this demonstrates how an individual has changed through participation in the program or service. So it gives a little bit more detail. It can be a change in behavior, skill, a change in knowledge or status. And to do this, we decided that we wanted to work with some customers that maybe we hadn't reached before. And we decided to focus on the Spring Board to Kindergarten program, which is a program for children going into kindergarten in Palo Alto who have not had preschool before, and often their first language is not English. So we went to the school, and we met with the teachers, the children, and the parents, and talked about summer reading at the beginning of the summer. And then we, at the end, we met with them again to see if anything had changed and what had happened. And these are a few of the outcomes. So 100% obtained library cards, so all the children that had library cards by the end of the summer. They'd all visited the library, and they all planned to return to the library. And also, parents said that they had a better understanding of why it's important to read with their children. All of the programs, certainly the youth programs we do, address one of the developmental assets. And I now want to just show you some of the great programs we did over the summer. And you will notice on some of the slides, there are the different assets. As I said, we focused, we really tried to have some family programs this year, and we started off with a great summer kickoff event, which was at Rinconada Park, and was in collaboration with the Community Services Department, Aquatics Department. And we had a great crowd, and it was a really good start to the program. Halfway through the summer, we had a family barbecue. This was held at the College Terrace Library, and there were free hot dogs and carnival games for all the family. As I mentioned before, we also had some programs for adults. And this year, one of our youth librarians, who's actually here today, decided to try her hand at some adult programming, and this was one of the programs that she came up with, and she will tell more about that later. We also had, another of our librarians did what you might think of as a more traditional program, where she shared all her favorite, or a lot of her favorite books, which focused on cooking and eating and food. And this was a very popular program, and indeed, she's going to do another one next month, if you missed that one. The teens, we had some, we repeated our STEM programs, programs that focus on science, technology, engineering, and math. This was very popular last year, so we decided to do it again. The children, they still, we still have a lot of presenters and performers come, and this is one of our children's librarians, who did science from the kitchen, so how you can do science experiments in your own kitchen. Finally, next year's theme is going to be Pause to Read, which makes me very happy, as this gives me a chance to highlight one of my favorite programs at the library, which is Pause to Read. We hold this program every month, and children come into the library and read to service dogs. And this combines the three of the things I really love, which is children, reading, and dogs. So thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jessica Goodman, Senior Librarian for Information Technology and Collections. And I'm going to show you some of the things that the library's been offering in the digital environment. So the first is a project called Creating Connections. This is a project bringing teens and seniors together for technology learning. And this was funded by a Library Services and Technology Act grant through the State Library, with additional support from the Friends of the Palo Alto Library. And this project is an example of the role that the library plays in teaching digital literacy skills. So this project targeted older adults. This is a growing population in Palo Alto, as well as in California, many of whom have been coming into the library and telling us how much they don't feel comfortable with some of the newest technologies, or don't feel knowledgeable about newest technologies, and that as a result, they can feel very isolated. So we partnered with two senior community centers, Avenidas and the JCC, to offer technology programs for seniors on their campuses at either side of Palo Alto. And then we recruited teen volunteers, people who would feel at ease with today's latest technologies, and not only feel at ease, but actually really have fun using them. With the teens serving as technology teachers to senior students, the teens also got to see that adults value their knowledge and perspective. And some of my colleagues have mentioned the Palo Alto developmental assets. This is another one of those developmental assets that's so crucial for teens. So we held a series of 20 hands-on, interactive learning sessions on a variety of popular Over a six-month period, we had 35 seniors and 25 teens participating regularly. As a result, the seniors reported how happy they were with the increased technology knowledge that they gained, as well as the many benefits that they got from interacting with teenagers, which was not something that they necessarily expected, and particularly non-family teenagers, who they don't often get to interact with. So the teens also gained skills by working with the senior students. Many of the skills are listed here, but they particularly enjoyed playing the teacher role for once, instead of the adult always being the teacher. And they really got a sense of accomplishment in opening doors to a whole new world. And I was surprised how many of them said how much fun they were having. So that was great. This is one of my favorite examples, and this is a teen who's teaching a senior how to Skype, so how to make video phone calls. And what the teen talked about was, you know, so this guy sees a face on the screen, and oh my God, this was science fiction when he was a child. For the teen, he was teaching someone how to Skype, but at the same time, he was learning empathy. So it was a really wonderful example of what happened in this program. So we plan to continue this program in some form in our new library, but in the meantime, we have several teen volunteers who are providing one-on-one technology tutoring for older adults by appointment at our Downtown and Mitchell Park libraries. So we know in the library that digital literacy skills increasingly matter as we read and watch and listen and communicate in digital formats. So in the library, we particularly see a lot of demand for growing our digital collections. And I'm going to show you a few of the things that we've been growing. So most in demand in the library, as you might guess, are eBooks and audiobooks. We offer two downloadable eBook services with thousands of titles, where you can read or listen to books on your computer, on your tablet, on your smartphone, on your Kindle. Basically, however you want to read a book, the library probably has some options for you. This year, we've also expanded into digital magazines. This is our Xenio Digital Magazine service, full color, complete current issues of popular titles like The Economist, National Geographic, Martha Stewart Living, and Newsweek. Now you can get them with your library card. And I mentioned Newsweek in particular, because they no longer publish in print. They only publish digitally. So it's really important that libraries can offer that. For music lovers, we have Freegal. This is free and legal music downloads, millions of tracks from diverse genres, and library cardholders can download three songs every week. And we also offer a way to get free museum passes to many Bay Area museums. You get the passes online through the Discover and Go service. You can discover cultural destinations, reserve a pass online, and then you print it, and you go. It's as simple as that. So the library continues to develop a wealth of digital collections and services, and alongside this, we're also offering those learning programs that are so crucial for people learning to navigate this ever-changing digital environment. You can get more information about any of these services on the library website. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Council members. My name is Cheryl, and I'm the Community Engagement Outreach Librarian for the Palo Alto City Library. And I know I have a long title for my job, but what I do is very simple for the library. What I do is POP. POP stands for Programs, Outreach, and Partnerships. POP stands for Programs, Outreach, and Partnerships. So the POP philosophy is very simple. This is our credo. We do not want to be your grandma or grandpa's library. We want to do customer-driven programming. So our customers drive the programs that we produce at the library. We like to hit the masses, and we are heavy in partnerships with other nonprofits, schools, corporations, and businesses within the Palo Alto community. So on average, we do around 10 programs, POP programs, a month. And so this is one of them. Storytime is like our bread and butter for the library. We have eight storytimes weekly, and we average around 500 kids and parents per week attending these storytimes. So think about this, we're taking our most popular storytime on the road, just like a concert for your favorite artist who goes to different places. We offer our storytime at different places as well. We do this monthly. And this one is at California Pizza Kitchen. The next one, we moved it to Pottery Barn in October, and this month, we actually did it at Provident Credit Union, and we have plans to do it at Dentist Brian Lou's office, and Blossom Birth Family Services, and a whole bunch of other places. So I have to tell you something, I have a little confession. I am a huge Giants fan, and in 2011, we replayed the Game Seven for the 2010 World Series at the library. The Giants were really supportive, as you can see, and they donated some really cool swag. But what is a baseball program without baseball food? And so one of those things that you have to have at a Giants baseball game is garlic fries. So I made a call to the only people I know in Palo Alto who have garlic fries, which is Gordon Beerish Brewery, and they were happy to donate. And I have to say, that call two years ago led to $5,000 worth of fundraisers for the library and this program right here. Now, I just wanted to let you know, I am allergic to alcohol, but when I did drink, I always used to go to the bar, and I used to order beer, not knowing kind of the different varieties there were, and the nuances between them. And so therefore, I asked Andy Breelove, the General Manager of Gordon Beerish Brewery, if he would be willing to host a beer education program to Palo Altons, to educate them on the ins and outs of beer. And I just jokingly said, hey, you know what? We could call this Brew University, where we would, people would come to class to learn about beer. And he absolutely loved the idea. In fact, we had a three-part beer series. First topic was Introduction to Beer. The second one was for Beer Geeks, people who knew a lot about beer already, but wanted to know really how much hops to water ratio and carbon dioxide. And then we also did Beer and Food pairings. And so I'm happy to report that we had three successful programs, and we had 209 graduates for this program. And we are actually starting our next cohort this December, where we're focusing on home brewing with the Silicon Valley Sudsers Group. Now Jessica had mentioned her program, Creating Connections, with teens and seniors. And so she participated in the Eureka Leadership Program, where she was given a $5,000 grant to do a specific program for the Palo Alto community. And I had participated in the program the year before. And so one of my favorite customers, Diana, came into the children's library, and I just asked her, how are you doing? And she, her hair was all disheveled, and I've never seen her like this, and she said, you know what, I'm having a really rough day. This parenting gig, it isn't easy. No one gives you a parenting manual and shows you how to be a parent. And I said, aha, this is the program that we need to do. Therefore, gave birth to the parenting program. We've had 350 people who have at least tended one, if not more, of the parenting program. And I wanted to highlight one of the parenting programs that we had. It was called Tough Times: Keeping Calm and Carrying On. And it was about how to tell your kids about complex adult problems that they may not know about, like about a death in the family, or an illness in the family. And so I wanted to read one of the emails that I got from one of our customers who actually came to the program. She said, "We are having a difficult time, as my sweet young husband had rectal cancer and has thrown our world into a tailspin. He is doing chemo and surgery at Stanford. It is a very challenging process, and all of us are very sad that he has to face this journey. But this is a much bigger challenge, thus the value of your lecture, Keeping Calm and Carrying On." So we are on our third year for the parenting program, and I know we're helping families, and I get emails constantly about this program, so I'm happy to report we still offer this program. And so one of the programs, on a happier note, in the past, we have hosted a back-to-school swap, where we had kids donate binders, backpacks, pencils, books, and school supplies, and we had them, allowed them to, give them a new home to some other Palo Alto residents. And so, of course, this program focuses on being green and recycling. Of course, we're the number-one green city in the nation, so this really fit in nicely to that. So we've hosted this for two years, and this actually gave birth to this year's program, which was our Halloween Costume Swap. We actually partnered with Blossom Birth Family Services, our Zero Waste, and our Recreation Department in the city. And we've collected around 180 costumes over two weeks at five different locations within the city. And then on the Friday after that, we actually distributed the costumes to attendees, and we just had enough costumes to fill the amount of kids that wanted them, so thank goodness. And we're definitely doing this program next year. So beyond programming, we do a lot of outreach events in Palo Alto. This allows us to kind of expand our reach, to capture customers beyond our five branches at the library. And these are just some of the events that we participated in in the last couple of months. Just on average, just to give you some statistics, we've issued 16 new library cards, and we've checked out 21 books, and we average around three hours per event. And so I was really honored to be the master of ceremonies at the Palo Alto Menlo Park Parents Club's Moon Festival. And if, you know, in Asian communities, the Moon Festival is a big celebration. And so I got to read the Moon Goddess story in front of a sea of 1,000 people, and I led the lantern parade. This program is the Simon Mall Group in Stanford Mall. They invited us to have a booth at their back-to-school event, and so we signed up a lot of library cards and checked out a lot of material. We also support the Palo Alto School District. And just this year, just to let you know some statistics, over the last two months, we've done 13 class visits with Palo Alto schools. This averaged around 4.3 programs per month, so we're averaging one program per week for the Palo Alto schools. And this one was the Palo Alto Unified School District Student Services Fair. Now, my dad grew up in East Palo Alto in the 60s, so I have a real passion for helping out those people in that community. So the Tinsley Volunteer Transfer Program in the Palo Alto School District allows kids who live in East Palo Alto to attend Palo Alto schools. And so this program is the Tinsley Library Card Campaign, and I was invited to give out library cards to those families in that program. And so we also do a lot of promotion with our virtual services, and so that's one of them. And so just recently, we did a fourth-grade database presentation for the Hope Technology Schools. So we have done a lot with the Palo Alto schools. We've done the Gamble Gardens Day as well. We've done a lot of storytimes for different community groups, and that was one of them. We also did one for the Stanford MBA Program. We did a storytime there. And we've also done the California Avenue Halloween Trick or Treat Fair, which was just recently. A couple of customers commented at these events, they're like, you're everywhere, the library's everywhere. And I said, the goal is to be everywhere that you are. So that's me, and I'm going to turn it back to Monique.
So we're going to wrap this up. We do, I did want to let you know that we do already have plans in place, obviously, for Mitchell Park. We're working on collections to add about, you know, to add a variety of new items, and include things that focus on local interests. We have not had a local interest collection, you know, with books that are by, about, and for Palo Altons, so we're going to add that. And we are expanding our international languages collection. So we'll have books, DVDs, and CDs in Chinese, Dutch, French, German, Indian language, Indian languages, Italian, Russian, and Spanish. We do actually, as Cheryl noted, we have a lot of community partnerships. We work with a lot of different businesses and nonprofit groups. The groups who are, of course, most closely focused on the library, and I want to acknowledge all three of them are the Library Advisory Commission, the Friends of the Palo Alto Library, and the Palo Alto Library Foundation. So we are, as Cheryl said, we want to be where you are at all times. So we do have a number of databases. You have some information at places, about the library, about the databases, about language learning, and a variety of services. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them. I will be also available via the website, and if the community has questions, we're happy to hear from them. So thank you very much for your time.
And thank you. And now we return for council for any questions.
Excellent presentation.
Yeah, it was an excellent presentation. It was a great presentation by staff. Councilmember Burt?
There were a lot of materials, both at our places and in the presentation, that I wasn't familiar with, and I was really impressed with them. And so the thought occurred to me, all right, well, why am I not familiar, and who else is not familiar, and how might we be able to get that word out more? Have you been periodically being able to be featured on the homepage of our website to draw people into kind of all of these services that you're providing?
We do, you know, regularly issue press releases. We do a lot through our Facebook, we have a Facebook page, Pinterest page, so there's a lot of people who do know about us. But I agree that you're right, and this is one area we want to focus on. We're working on a market segmentation study and a strategic plan, and making people aware, I think, will be a key element of that. We've not had a formal plan in place. And this, this presentation actually came as a result of your email about Makerspace in Chicago Public Library, and me thinking, well, we're already working on that. And Councilmember Niss saying, why don't you do this? And it's like, oh, we do that already. So if you guys don't know, you're right, then, then we need to work on that.
And a lot of your programs are family-oriented. Are you using the communication tools from the school district? Are they allowing you to promote this through them?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, thanks.
Enthusiastic nodding, yes.
Great.
So Monique, yes, I liked, it was a great, great presentation. I had one question, was I noticed that the circulation on books is down slightly, and given that we have a temporary library, I assume that actually is the reason for that, and actually, it's, it's held up fairly well, I would assume. Is that, would that be your turn?
I was actually a little bit surprised that it held up as well as it did, although we only closed main in May. So this is actually last fiscal year. I think we'll see it go down again this year. There are, there are people, again, this goes back to that, people who don't even realize there is a temporary Mitchell Park. So I want, you know, I want to emphasize, we've been holding steady, we hope we continue to. I think realistically, it may go down. And when they all are open and back functioning fully, we hope it'll go up dramatically.
And so I noticed the biggest decrease from 2009 was in something called Other Media. What is Other Media?
Other media includes, not, not, it includes CD-ROMs, things like that, that maybe people are downloading, rather. I think the personal computer use also went down dramatically, and I think that's a result of people bringing in their own devices. So I think it's a number of technology changes. And some of the things, we had kits, senior care kits that were never used, and things like that. So, you know, there were some things that we've changed.
I mean, it looks like DVDs are holding pretty solid. CDs seem to be falling slightly.
Right.
Audiobooks actually seem up, given the...
You can download them, yeah, so I think that helps. And they're very popular for people who have to commute.
Well, thank you very much. Councilmember Niss?
I took, one, first as a comment. Several of us were just in Seattle for our national conference. We all needed help downloading the app for the conference, which was rather interesting. But when you talk about teens, it looked like a teen who was helping us download the app. I think probably not, but you could look for the youngest one at the booth, and pretty sure that was the one that could help us out. He did a good job. But the other, the other question I have is regarding downloading on your Kindle. Can that be done? Is that what your, is that what your Zineo and so forth is talking about? And if so, how do you do that?
We can, we'll help you, well, anyone, you know, if you want, you can make an appointment with one of our technology tutors, or with me, and we'll be happy to show you. Each platform for eBooks has different limitations and different things that it will and won't do. And we do have instructions, and we have simplified instructions on our website. Jessica's done a fantastic job of doing that. So, so yes, you can. It's not always simple, it's not always quick, and that's not the library, that's the vendor who sells us the platform. And we do whatever we can to make it easy for you, so we're happy to help.
So when you are downloading them, because if you go to borrow a book, I mean, you have a certain length of time on it and so forth. If I'm downloading on my Kindle, or whatever my reader might happen to be, what are the limitations on that?
There are checkout limitations, there is a due date for the item.
Same thing?
Same thing, but you will never realize a fine if you're overdue, because it will just disappear. So you will, you'll be timed out, essentially.
Okay, so you're saying, yes, you can download, you know, your favorite new bestseller, or whatever that may be?
As long as it's been made available to us by the publisher and by the service, yes, absolutely.
And it might not have always been, I realize.
Not always, yeah.
But otherwise, you can borrow it for a week, or two, or three?
Up to three weeks.
And then it will disappear?
Yep.
Okay, great. I recall you discussed, we did discuss this once before, but I had forgotten some of those fine points of how to do that. So that's very helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right. And now we're to City Manager comments.
Well, thank you, thanks, Monique and staff. That is pretty amazing, overwhelming, comprehensive presentation, and it's nice to see the council making time to sort of fill out the picture of what it is that the city does. So often in the meetings here, we just, you're just working through some tough issues at the moment, and it's nice to see this backdrop of everyday Palo Alto and the great value and services that our, our staff provides. I did want, it's that time of year again, holiday tree lighting scheduled for Saturday, November 30th. So again, the invitation to the public to join local businesses, other families and friends, as well as city council members and city staff at our Third Annual Holiday Tree Lighting, which will be held from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. in Litton Plaza at University Avenue and Emerson Street. So this festive event again kicks off the holiday season in downtown, as our community comes together to enjoy this family-friendly early evening. New this year is our mini snowman building contest, so bring your own items to dress and customize your snowman, and we will provide the snow. We'll have the official lighting of our now magnificent 20-foot holiday tree growing each year, hot cider to warm everyone up, live holiday music provided by five local student groups, and a chance for you to support local businesses on Small Business Saturday, all in the heart of downtown Palo Alto. When? It is Saturday, November 30th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And if so inclined, please bring a warm coat to donate to the Downtown Streets team to help those in need. The event will be held rain or shine. Don't worry about the little bit of snow, though, that will be... Don't worry about the little bit of snow, though, that will be at the event. A brief update to the solemn news, of course, and the testimony that the council received from our friends in Palo, our sister city, and other Filipinos. We have gotten some communication from our friends in Palo, our sister city, through third parties. Ruth Carlton, who is a Neighbors Abroad VP in charge of Palo, was able to reach Mayor Patia's daughter, who lives in California, who confirms that indeed, the need is dire. But that City Hall is partially standing and has been used as an evacuation center for folks whose homes have been destroyed. We've been working closely with Neighbors Abroad and are in the final process of vetting some nonprofit organizations with boots on the ground in Palo. And some guarantees about ensuring that funding that can go for needed, water, food, and medical assistance from Palo Alto will be reaching the folks in Palo very soon. Neighbors Abroad is also in the process of creating an online portal for donations. And the city will assist in getting the word out, using whatever means possible, and keep you more informed as we get, or keep you informed as we get more news. And successful tree lighting, of course, of Aurora on Saturday, the 16th. And more to come on that one. And that's all I have to report, and I'll defer to the Vice Mayor and others later. Thank you.
And so now we're at Councilmember questions, comments, and announcements. Councilmember Klein?
Yes, I want to report on attending the National League of Cities Congress of Cities, which translates to Annual Meeting, in Seattle last week. And just a few of the highlights, for me, anyway, were being one of the authors of the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee's new updated policy with regard to global warming, which was adopted by the full league. We spent a half-day in Bellevue, Washington, which is across the bay from Seattle. And it was a, really an eye-opening tour of Bellevue, which is, has an interesting profile. In some ways, it's like Palo Alto, and in other ways, it's not at all. I'm looking at the numbers, just so I don't misrepresent them. Bellevue is only 60 years old. Its population over that 60 years has grown from 6,000 to, sorry, sorry, it's gone from 6,000 to, what is it now, 132,000. It's a downtown area is intensely developed, very deliberate on their part to have downtown heavily developed, many high-rise buildings, 20, 30 stories, protected in the main from their neighborhoods by two major freeways that encircle the downtown area. Their, part of their city is very affluent, but it has also a much lower economic section than, than we do. But their social service programs, I think, what really stood out, that they have a very extensive outreach program funded primarily by their faith community. And one of my takeaways is that I think that we probably need a closer collaboration with our faith community with some of the problems that we've had over the last year or so. We may be more affluent than, than Bellevue, but I think that they're doing work in that area that, that we should emulate. I would also mention that some of the programs I attended focused on extreme weather conditions and other aspects of global warming. And one of my takeaways there is work being done by Seattle's utility. They are doing some very interesting work in developing algorithms for their infrastructure improvements, as to how they should take into account global warming, sea level rise, and siting of various improvements. And it seems that they're one of the leaders in that, and I think there's probably some, some learning that we might get from that as well. One last thing on the health of the organization. NLC is in its first year with a new executive director. The previous executive director had been there for, I don't know, 15 years or so, and apparently did not leave things in good shape. But NLC membership is picking back up again after the economic downturn. Attendance at this meeting in Seattle was up as compared to the similar meeting a year ago in Boston. And they've ended, it's ended the, its fiscal year with a million-dollar surplus, which will be used for primarily hiring additional staff. So that's my report.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Shepherd?
Thank you. I would also like to report out on the National League of Cities and some of my takeaways. Initially, my, one of my first sessions was with the Smart City program that IBM has developed, which is a computerized program. I really appreciated and valued how they considered this, though. It was to try to break down silos in between the different avenues, the different departments in a city that actually have to do infrastructure work. And so they, they actually call it asset plan, having an asset plan and managing your assets. And I really like that, because it kind of illustrated how we should be protecting that and carrying this forward. Also, one of my sessions also took me to the greenest building in the world. This is where they have, all of their waste goes into an anaerobic digester in the basement of the building, that it is directed in an, in such a way with a lot of windows, that allows it to take as much outside light as possible. Since they are in Seattle, and we did not really see the sun up there at all, I don't think. They actually, Saturday morning for, we saw a snippet of it. But they have solar panels on their roof that actually take care of all of the energy of the building. It's about a 55,000-square-foot building. And their technique for negotiating with their electric company, which is Seattle City Lights, is to have two meters, one that runs the actual building to meter how much energy they're using, and then another meter that would run what the building should have been using had they not put into place these technologies that reduce the use of energy. And so the, Seattle City Lights actually purchases back that difference as diverted electricity, and electricity that they would not have to go out and build another power station for. I thought that was very interesting, different from the way we do it with the concept of Palo Alto Clean, where we're doing feed and tariff, and yet at the same time, effective. And it's the only contract that they have of that type, and it's a 20-year contract. Also, I went over to see the Seattle City Lights did a program on LED lights, street lights. They are getting very attractive. They are turning, the lightings for street lighting is starting to look either historic or avant-garde, just interesting and fun, and not just your typical streetlights with an LED light. And they are changing the needle for themselves as to how much power they use in order to light the streets. And one of the takeaways from this was the fact that since they don't have to change the bulbs as much, because the bulbs last for 15 years, they actually don't have to employ as many people. Before they transitioned over into this, they would often have about 5,000 lights out in the city at one time, and it would take four months, maybe, to come and repair a bulb. And so this has significantly reduced that experience for them and allowing them to keep the streets lit. We also saw some of, one of the innovations from Philips that's coming out, where you actually have a, you have the ability to put a DAS unit or a cell tower inside the design of a streetlight. So that you would never know it was there. It would just look like some of the design of a streetlight that could look old-fashioned or modern. And, or a street kiosk, where it's a touch but, touchscreen, when is transit coming? And, or what are, what is it that I need to know? Little smart kiosks that are starting to pop up on the streets, which also integrates a DAS unit, so that cellphone coverage throughout the city is integrated into the design on the streets, which I thought was also really much more attractive than some of the things that I've seen so far. I, too, attended one of the sessions on natural disasters because of climate change. What the experience that Florida have, is having right now really is basically the canary in the coalmine for the United States. And it's listening to the experiences that they're having, having in Florida with 100-year floodplains going deep into the state now, based on the backup of high tides into storm drains and sewers, is, is really something that they have to take into serious consideration as they develop, continue to develop in the state. And I was, I was glad to be able to hear it firsthand, but also troubled that there doesn't seem to be solutions or activity around trying to resolve how to address this issue. Then finally, on Friday night, my colleagues and I got to go to the, the Digital City surveys. We were the winner of the, was it the medium city from up to 75,000, small to medium or something city? And we were the number one first place out of many, many, many other cities. And this was a proud moment for Palo Alto. I think Jim wants to say something about this. He's much better at it than I am. But I would like to pass this around, because it's a substantial award. And, and a lot of fun to meet those that filled out the survey and shared their information and learned a lot more about different techniques that other city councils use to try to develop transparency and promote their digital agenda. And so it was a good evening to learn more and with colleagues across the nation. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Niss?
So with Nancy's encouragement, I will add a little rah-rah to this. Where, where did it go? So, so one of the things I learned from this, for all of you out there, is that this is, and besides, this was for cities under 75,000, which of course we are. But the, the competition, oh my lord. This is, it's very, very heavy. The competition for this was astonishing. I think they gave out, as I recall, I'm going to look at Jim, three categories or four categories of awards, four categories. So there were 40 awards that were given out. Cities all across the country just buy to get this kind of award. And I think, if I'm right, Jim, you said it's just been the third year that we've really been involved in it. Why don't you jump in for a minute and just do your rah-rah? It's even better than mine.
Well, no, I just would add that this has been a national benchmarking model done by the Center for Digital Government, which is associated with E-republic, also publishers of Governing Magazine, and a whole host of public sector government technology. For 13 years, Palo Alto's never been in the running. And three years ago, I challenged our Chief Information Officer to get us to number one in our category. We did it in two years' time.
And that's just what we'd expect. So I think the biggest challenge now is to do it again next year. And that said, I would still encourage anyone to go, the next conference will be legislative in DC in early March. The weather probably won't be much better than it was in Seattle. But, and I'm not casting any aspersions on Seattle, but it was cold and wet. So other than that, it was very fun. But I don't remember where this is going to be held next year, to either you, Nancy, or, in Austin, Texas? So in Austin, in probably November again. So it might, might be a fair amount warmer. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to welcome the Boy Scouts who've joined us. Welcome. Thank you for coming. Then I would like to say that I attended on Thursday the Santa Clara County's Cities Association meeting. And our staff presented on us being the number one digital city, talked about fiber, talked about what we're doing in terms of big data, talked about a number of things like that. And it was very well received. And I think everyone there was really interested in what we're doing from a digital city perspective. I'd also like to say that Councilmember Schmidt came and presented on, for Council of the Aging, which is now Sourcewise, is that correct? And he did a fabulous job, and everyone was really impressed with what he did. I'd also like to say at that meeting, they elected me Secretary and Treasurer of the Santa Clara County Cities Association. So I was pleased about that. On Fri-, was it Fri-, on Saturday, we obviously did the Aurora opening, which was a fantastic event. And I really wanted to thank the, the Art Commission for that and city staff. It was really well done. And Harry Hirschman and the artist, it was really a nice event. And I think we had, it seemed to me we had somewhere around 250, 300 people out there. It was very crowded. It was really well done. And I think everyone enjoyed it. And I think the artwork looks fantastic. On, let's see, what was it? That was Fri-, yes, on Friday night, I'm trying to keep all this straight. I had the pleasure of going to the American Girl store. And wanted to say that they've done a fantastic job with that. And there were a lot of young women that were very, very excited about that. It is the only Northern California store for American Girl, and it's number 16 in the country. And we're very pleased to have it in Palo Alto. And I was not surprised that we got it over San Francisco. I thought that was a, a great coup for Palo Alto. And one of the interesting things was, when I went to Stanford Shopping Center on Sunday, I couldn't find parking.
Because of American Girl?
Because of American Girl. They told me that on Saturday, they had somewhere around 8,000 people go through that American Girl store. And there was, it was like Disneyland with a Fastpass. You had to sign up and get a time to do it. And Sunday was the same. So it's actually bringing lots of people to the, to the mall. And then I did want to say that Rhonda Goncalves, our, Rhonda, our clerk over here, is leaving us, and we're very sad to hear that. And this will be her last council meeting. And I wanted to thank her very much for her service for her city and tell her that we're going to miss her. All right. Now we need a motion for, oh, now we're on to oral communications. And we have Jerry Underall, to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
My name is Jerry Underall. I live at 534 Georgia Avenue in Barron Park. And I'm here to make a few remarks about bicycle safety on Maybell, which I think is an important consideration and one that came up often in the last several months. I've lived in that neighborhood for about 40 years now and have bicycled there. My wife is a retired teacher from Breone's, a third-grade teacher, where they teach the bicycle safety class. So we've been deeply involved in bike safety in that area. I got involved in the Maybell issue out of concern for bicycle safety there, because I feel that the streets should be safe enough for more students to ride to school successfully on that street. And that if it is safe enough, then we'll get a reduction of automobiles, because fewer parents will feel obligated to drive their children to school, which causes enormous complications if you look at the patterns there. I've always felt that this Maybell property should not be an issue when we're looking at the bicycle issue. Because no matter how that property gets developed, you have the existing problem of bicycle safety. And whatever you do to deal with it the way it is, would have dealt with the small incremental change that would come either by the affordable housing for seniors or by what's coming next. Who knows? But it's not, compared to the changes in traffic coming from the, the employment and economic scene around here, I think it was going to be minimal anyway. So we know what needs to be done. It's not a question of whether bicycles are going to be there, but how to do it well. We need to do what we can now with the students that are already on the road. We're off to a good start. The first meeting was held in the neighborhood about a month or six weeks or something ago, following the same process that the Matadero process has followed. They're a bit farther along. I was a little bit troubled the other night, it's planning a transportation commission, when it sounded as though there were difficulties moving the Bicycle Boulevard program through, and that it might be linked to the Maybell. I encourage people to consider the Maybell project on its own terms as much as possible. The improvements done six years ago helped a great deal, but we can do more. And it is within our reach to do. All agree that bicycle safety is the key issue over there. This should not be a, an issue that divides the community, but should unite the community that's had a hard time with some divisive issues in the recent past. If there's a need for volunteers to help with gathering the data that the Transportation Committee said would be helpful, I am willing and eager to get training and to help do this. And I'm And I'm sure that there are a number of senior citizens like myself and others who are concerned about this in the neighborhood who would love to help get this done. So thank you for your support for bicycle options in the city and continue the good work. Thanks.
Thank you. Stephanie Munoz to be followed by Chuck Jagoda.
Good evening, Mayor Sharf and council members. This is about how values impinge on what the council should do or might consider doing. In the recent election, it was about values. One side said, "We think homage to the elderly is more important than anything." And the other side, well, it's important, said it's important, but it's not more important than democracy, self-expression, or orchards. So when I stood here and I said, "If you use PC to get the money to build a police station, you'll lose that election," I meant that you'd be losing your moral high ground. A police station symbolizes respect for authority, which is something like respect for the elderly, but not exactly the same. In fact, it reminds people about what they didn't like about the elderly when they were growing up: coercion, manipulation. And some of the arguments proponents of the rezoning made were like that also, implying that the opponents were very selfish to put their own wishes ahead of what the majority wanted. But if you use the PC to get the police station also, then you'd lose your moral superiority. Because the undecided voters would say, "Oh, it wasn't the seniors who were so important after all. It was just the money." So you can see that the value that we're talking about is not compassion. If it were, the hue and cry from the citizens would never have allowed you to shut down the showers. But your estimation of community values, Councilwoman Ness, I think we're right on the money, I'm sorry to say. I think you would have won that election if the grant deadline hadn't come up just after you dumped all the Arrasodaro traffic on Maybell. I think that was what did you in. What I want to say is, having made an issue of senior housing, I think it behooves you to go ahead and buy the land, buy the land from Palo Alto Housing Corporation and put up the 40, the half of the building for 40 low-income seniors only and a senior nutrition center. And then next year, go after another grant for another $21 million and put up another 40 seniors on the other half of the property. I think that that's the kind of decision that is in conformity with the values of the community. And I'd like to see you apply the same thing, rethinking your decision about the parking on 611 Cowper. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Jagoda to be followed by Win Gersich.
Thank you. This is the second part of the moral high ground part of the evening. I'd like to address some of you individually. Mark Berman, I wrote you an email to thank you for your vote against the ordinance, but it came back that your mailbox was full and undeliverable, and I wrote again and the same thing happened. Karen Holman and Gail Price, I'd like to thank you for coming Saturday to the presentation about the Santa Barbara parking program. Something happened, a small thing, but it's annoying at that presentation. The issue came up, as it has come up in Larry's mouth today and keeps coming up, about the churches. I don't think it does anybody any good to keep pointing fingers and accusing each other, especially about something that's over. The vote was cast and the ordinance passed, and blaming the churches is really not fair. Here's a better approach. If you really felt that it was a big blow to you that the churches didn't cooperate enough in the attempt to have a pilot parking program, how about asking why? What went wrong? Here's something, they didn't show up in sufficient force to the meeting. The reason they didn't show up in sufficient force was they didn't have enough time. They were invited on very short notice. And churches don't move fast. If you know anything about them, you know that. That's not anybody's fault. They weren't, I don't think you all or whoever invited, Curtis Williams, I believe, invited them. He wasn't, I don't think, being clever and sneaky and giving them not enough time to respond. I don't think that. And I don't think the churches were trying to be rude and say, "Well, we're not interested." These things happen. Curtis is under pressure. Churches don't move fast, you know? Don't keep blaming them. Don't keep bringing it up. And another thing, Mr. Klein, it's not fair to blame homeless people for declaring coverly a de facto homeless shelter. I believe Mr. Keen has given credit for that in the papers whenever it is mentioned. And I don't know of any homeless people who use the word "de facto." And again, as I told you last time, it was a good thing that there was a facility that people could use, not a bad thing. And as far as in keeping with the traditions of these neighborhoods, I'm very proud to say that Palo Alto is a city where students don't graduate from high school unless they put in time volunteering at some kind of civic organization. I think that's great. It teaches them that that's part of life. It's not just all about taking, it's also about giving. And they're, the city of Palo Alto, obviously, or the school district thinks so too. Thank you.
Win Gersich to be followed by Gary Wellesley, Wesley.
Hi. I was here last time, and you were talking about the homeless. And I'm kind of surprised, because I go to many city councils and water boards and things around the Bay Area. And this city council, you said you have, what, 70,000 people in this city? You've got nine people on this panel here. Every place else has only five. You get rid of four of them, you've got a whole lot of income there that you could help the homeless with, that you don't have to sit there and ask Joe Semidion for it. And you don't have to sit there through everybody's opinion, which takes hours on end for every time you have some issue that we've got to hear everybody, that you could save a lot of time. You know, Menlo Park only has five people, and I think they have one of the best city councils I've ever heard. And, you know, Fremont has 210,000 people. They only got five on theirs. You know, 210, and you only got 70. You got nine. Why do you need nine people to do all these decision-making here? So I also had given you a CD from Paul Connet, and it has all of the brain damage studies done on fluoridation. It has how it lowers IQs. It doesn't prevent cavities. And I did give you the disc, and I do want the disc back. And strict liability is when the wrong doers do wrong and they claim they didn't know and it was a mistake. It's to protect the public. Well, now you totally have evidence, and Mr. Klein is on the Bosquaw Water Board, which the meeting's this Thursday. And I know that he's going to take that evidence and he's going to speak up and tell everybody, especially San Francisco PUC, that fluoridation should be stopped because you have the evidence and it's poison. I also took that CD and I went to ACWD, which puts the poison in the water for all the hedge-etchy water drinkers. And I gave them the evidence too and asked Marty Kohler to go to Sacramento and asked Jackie Spears to overthrow her bill to fluoridate the rest of the state since she knows it lowers IQs. I'm also going to give you the, this is a printout of the blood lead levels from the lead in the fluoridation chemicals. I'm going to put that on if you didn't open up that CD, because I do want the people in Palo Alto to check out what I put on public record. What I want to talk to you about the most is on YouTube, there's a movie called Thrive. And I recommend everybody see this. This movie, Thrive, especially the Boy Scouts, it tells what our government is doing to reduce the population and kill us, and about the New World Order. But at the end of the video, it tells solutions and what people have done to try to stop the stuff that is happening. And, you know, the chemtrail thing is debunked, because on Veterans Day, my friend right here heard it on the news, they were saying how they spray those lines in the sky to generate, to recreate the weather. And since Stanford has a grant with NASA to spray that stuff, and it's strontium and barium, which is radioactive, they're spraying radiation on us, and they're spraying aluminum oxide, and you know aluminum causes Alzheimer's. But what they're doing is making the ground so acidic, things don't grow, so they have to grow genetically modified food. And then they put all these fillers in there, animal parts in a plant, because they claim that nothing will grow, and they need fillers when they make this stuff, and it constantly regi-, you know, this was a city that went against, you know, having genetically modified food labeled. So when you look at this stuff, everybody watched Thrive, and I'm going to put this on public record.
Thank you. Gary Wellesley, Wesley, to be followed by Tim Gray, Timothy Gray.
Gary Wesley, I'm a resident of Mountain View, which is a city just south of here. And there is something that's coming to Mountain View and may also be coming to Palo Alto that I wanted to warn you about. More than 40 years ago, an agency was formed in this county called the Valley Transportation Authority. The VTA brought us buses on El Camino Real, and you'll remember that later on, light rail was added. Now, the VTA has made a scientific breakthrough. It has a brand-new idea for moving people from place to place. It was science fiction not long ago. It is amazing technology. Forty years after the VTA brought us buses on El Camino, the VTA is now proposing to bring us buses on El Camino. But not just any buses, fancy buses, very expensive, boarded at islands in the middle of the road, supported by signal preference, supported by bus-only lanes in each direction on El Camino. And I noticed when the VTA proposed this more than a year ago, and this has been in the works for a while, Palo Alto was excluded. That is, there was no proposal for bus-only lanes, at least north of Showers, which is where Walmart is, and before San Antonio in Mountain View. But then I started attending some regional meetings, and I found out there's, there're much broader plans for the expansion of the Bay Area. And it really entails a complete change of El Camino Real. And when there are bus-only lanes in Menlo Park and there are bus-only lanes in Mountain View, Palo Alto is next. And if you think standing alone, surrounded by bus-only lanes, you're going to continue to be exempt, you're quite wrong. And if I'm still alive, I'll come back here in five years and say I told you so. Thanks so much. By the way, I did give some letters that just appeared in the Mountain View Voice on this subject. Letters don't appear online, and so you might want to take a look at that. Thanks.
Timothy Gray to be followed by Joe Hirsch.
I'm Tim Gray, 4173 Park Boulevard in Palo Alto. And I wanted to continue my advocacy of citizen participation, but instead of reflecting on lessons of Measure D, I wanted to address the upcoming budget. I understand that there is a significant additional tax revenue that could be coming to our city. But I still think that we need to look back, take inventory of the services that the city provides, let the citizens give you some feedback about how they prioritize, perhaps even suggest some reductions, and make a significant down payment to our future of infrastructure and reduce the amount of debt that's being proposed. The next battle will be, of D, will be about debt. And lack of citizen participation will lead to another citizen revolt. So please listen to the people. We need a little less city government. Show that we can take the first step and control our spending, put our additional tax revenues not to a new wish list, but to a very balanced, and paying back the amount of money that we have borrowed from ourself by the last 15 years of overspending. So I respectfully ask that you include a lot of citizens in making progress and to our future financial health.
Thank you. Joe Hirsch.
I'm going to tell you what I and too many others in Palo Alto are feeling. There's way too much traffic adversely affecting our daily activities, neighborhoods, and overall quality of life. Three examples. Last Wednesday at 5:30 PM, it took me 12 minutes to drive 1.1 miles to go from East Charleston to a nonprofit meeting on East Bay Shore. Last Thursday at 5:30 PM, after leaving a council subcommittee meeting, it took me more than 20 minutes to drive to my home on Georgia Avenue. To do that, I had to cut through the Barron Park Green Acres neighborhood to avoid the well-known long lines of traffic on El Camino, north of Arrasodaro and south of Page Mill. Last Friday at a dinner party at 7:00 PM, the last couple to arrive said, quote, "It took me 28 minutes to drive three miles," close quote. Traffic is bad. Actually, it's worse than that. It's horrible, and it's not healthy for anyone. I and others are requesting a complete moratorium on all higher-density development in Palo Alto until such time as a comprehensive and competent land use and transportation study is completed. The study should be citywide using the latest VTA methodology as approved by council in July that takes into account, A, all changes that have occurred since prior studies, B, all proposed developments, approved or not, that are in the pipeline or under consideration, and C, cumulative effects of all changing land uses. We need to know, and you should want to know, the current status of traffic and the cumulative impact of all proposed developments. We know that each new development, regardless of wishful thinking about public transit, will only worsen traffic and increase the number of cars on our roads. The cumulative impact is worse. All will be watching with great interest how each of you responds to this request, which is backed by the recent vote on Measure D, where voters sent a clear message that high-density zoning in residential areas has to stop. Our group is extending that message to all higher-density developments in commercial areas, as well as the adverse impacts of such developments are as great, if not greater. The traffic situation and the spillover parking when inadequate onsite parking is approved are simply unsustainable and unsupportable. You should not ignore what is actually happening around us. You should lead by putting in place a complete moratorium until it can be determined what future development is appropriate. If you do not, that will be your lasting legacy to the people of Palo Alto who you serve. For those running for reelection next November, your actions will be watched and remembered. Voters will ask you why you continue to approve developments that make traffic, parking, and overall quality of life worse for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we need a motion on the minutes.
So move second.
We could vote on the board? And that passes unanimously. Now we're on to the consent calendar, and I know Councilmember Holman's going to vote no on item, on item number seven. You had your light on, did you? Was that in response to this?
Yes.
Okay. If we could have a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Oh, we do have a public speaker? Sorry. Herb Barak, Mr. Barak, if you'd like to come up.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Sharf and council members. You have an item at places this evening in response to Council Holman's question about construction that's taking place, even though you have not yet adopted this ordinance and it's not effective yet. Staff has restated the question is referring to construction not yet taking place by the effective date of the ordinance, yet the answer doesn't say anything about the effective date, instead refers to the developer proceeding at his own risk if he begins work after the second reading of the ordinance. That's usually not what that phrase is referring to. I would have preferred to see an answer that said that staff knows that it's against the law to do the the law to do the construction until the effective date of the ordinance. If someone files a timely lawsuit, then after that date, that's when someone would be proceeding at risk that they might lose the lawsuit. But I believe a clearer answer would have been that if the developer starts construction tomorrow, that's against the law, and it will be stopped. Now, this is not the first time that this developer's violated the law. You know, the developer's agent demolished one of the public benefits, and although staff told you, they issued a stop-work order, in fact, they allowed the developer to continue building part of the project and brought the subject to you six months after the building was demolished. So, you know, this is not an isolated case that the developer thought there was a miscommunication. This is a pattern of behavior that the staff and the council have allowed to occur. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we had a motion, but did we get a second for the?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Schmidt?
Could I ask the city attorney to respond to that?
Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. I will let staff go into the details of the communication chain that occurred here. I am not up on all of the aspects of what led to the current circumstance, but let me be clear. The effective date of an ordinance is 31 days after the second reading. Construction should not proceed until that period of time has passed. Any construction that does occur is at the developer's own risk.
Councilmember Schmidt, I mean, I think that the city attorney's answer right there responded to the question that you had. I don't think that we can shed more light on this miscommunication. It is a miscommunication, and at this point, we don't have a resolution as to who said what exactly and where. This is what the applicant told us. Velberg is reporting.
All right, if we could, if you want to say something further, Councilmember?
Yeah, I'd like to vote no on seven.
All right, so we have two votes, no votes on seven. And with that, we could vote on the board. And that passes unanimously with Councilmembers Schmidt and Holman voting no on item number seven. And now that brings us up to item number 16. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. For the staff to get up here.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, I'm Hillary Gittleman, the planning director. I know it's an interesting time to come to the city. The mayor's called for a discussion on the future of the city, and I expect that conversation will lead back to the city's comprehensive plan and how to complete an update that articulates the community's visions for the future. Wherever that conversation leads, however, we're going to be faced with decisions like the one before you right now, which is a project that has been proposed that is consistent with the comprehensive plan and with zoning. Obviously, I can't speak to the details of the project. I'm joined by Aaron and Russ, who are going to continue the presentation, but I did want to point out a few things. One, the proposal involves mixed-use development on a transit corridor in an area that's been zoned for such development since the mid-1950s at the earliest, at the latest. We know it was zoned that way at least in the mid-'50s. The proposal would implement the housing element, which is the most up-to-date portion of the comprehensive plan, by speaking to one of the objectives about creating small residential units. The proposal was the subject of a traffic study, which concluded that it could contribute to a significant cumulative impact, and a mitigation measure has been included in the conditions of approval to address that impact. This proposal was first submitted to the city in January of this year and has been reviewed by both the Planning and Transportation Commission and the Architectural Review Board on its way to you this evening. Russ is going to take it from here, but we'd be happy to answer any questions you have about this proposal tonight, and our recommendation is going to be for approval of the project.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Scharf and council members. The project site is a 1.6-acre property south of Page Mill Road on State Route 82, El Camino Real, bounded by Portage Avenue to the southeast, Acacia Avenue to the northwest, and the developed site at 435 Acacia Avenue, Equinox Gym. The site currently consists of four parcels. A separate preliminary parcel map application has been approved to merge the parcels together. The site includes Equinox Gym Annex at 3127 El Camino Real, the We Fix Max Building at 3159 El Camino Real, the parking structure at 440 Portage, and two other surface parking lots. To the north of Acacia, it is a surface parking lot. Across El Camino Real to the west are restaurants McDonald's and the Fish Market. Across Portage Avenue to the south is a retail use Foot Locker and office buildings. And across the alley to the east is a retail use Fries Electronics. The site is zoned surface-commercial, and the site's comprehensive plan land use designation is also surface-commercial. The proposed project is a 67,506-square-foot mixed-use building, which combined with the existing 6,616-square-foot Equinox Gym Annex currently located on the site, would result in a floor area total of 74,122 square feet. The proposed height of the building would be 55 feet above grade. At the ground-floor level, retail, restaurant, office, and commercial recreation uses are proposed. Office uses would also occupy portions of the second and third floors. A total of 48 small residential apartment units would be provided on the upper three levels. The proposal is compliant with the El Camino Real guidelines. The building provides consistent massing along the street edge to reinforce the street while also providing a multitude of pedestrian-friendly elements, such as a raised dining plaza set back from the street, two colonnades to buffer the ground-floor spaces from the street, and provide weather protection for pedestrians, a central pedestrian entry portal that accesses the large central courtyard, and upper floors that are set back from the street to reduce the apparent height of massing of the building. The building setback on El Camino Real would allow for a minimum effective sidewalk of at least 12 feet. The project includes surface and one-level below-grade parking for 216 vehicles. The new parking garage would connect to the existing below-grade garage on Portage. Three-level car stackers or puzzle lifts would be installed within the new garage. The applicant will provide a short video to demonstrate how these work. Vehicular access to the site would be provided exclusively on Portage Avenue via two curb cuts. All other existing curb cuts on El Camino Real and Acacia would be removed, improving pedestrian safety and adding additional on-street parking. Parking spaces would be provided in both the existing two-level garage on Portage Avenue and in the new underground garage that would be accessed from a below-grade connection to the existing Portage Avenue garage. 15 surface-level visitor parking spaces are also proposed beneath the residential wing of the proposed building. I'd like to cover a few key issues that were detailed in the staff report. Because the project would provide 10% or five of the residential rental units as below-market-rate units, also known as BMRs, the applicant is entitled under state law to request one concession to the city's zoning requirements. The concession the applicant has requested is for floor area. They've requested a total of 4,619 square feet. This amount is consistent with the draft density bonus ordinance that's currently being considered by the city. When providing BMR units, projects are entitled by right to use the state's calculation for required parking for the residential units. It's important to note that this is not a concession, it is a state mandate. The state's formula results in 31 fewer spaces than the city's parking ordinance. The project is otherwise compliant with the city's parking requirements. The BMR units would provide low-income housing for five of the units within the project for a period of 30 years. The application includes a total of two design enhancement exceptions, or DEEs. The first is for height. The height limit for the CS zone is 50 feet. The applicant has proposed a DEE to exceed the 50-foot height limit by five feet for total height of 55 feet. This additional five feet in height would only occur at the loft roofs that pop up above the 50-foot height limit. The code allows mechanical roof screens to exceed the 50-foot height limit by 15 feet. The proposed mechanical roof screens are only proposed to be five feet tall. The exception is requested as a way to improve the design of the project. Rather than having multiple roof screens randomly scattered across the top of the building, the height of the loft roofs have been proposed to integrate with the roof screens to form one single cohesive roof element. Visually, the building design benefits from the ability to exceed the height limit to create the unified roof element while also benefiting the small residential units with a little more room. While it does result in some additional floor area within the units, the DEE is not an exception for floor area. The second DEE is an alleviation to the build-to-line requirement. The CS Zone District requires that 33% of the building be built up to the setback on the side streets, Acacia and Portage avenues, and that 50% of the main building frontage on El Camino Real be at the setback line of 0 to 10 feet to create a 12-foot effective sidewalk width. This is the distance between the curve and the building face. On the 458-foot-long Portage Avenue frontage, the length of the building wall is approximately 149 feet long. To meet the 33% build-to-setback requirement, at least 49 linear feet of the building wall would need to be built up to the five-foot setback requirement. To accommodate the extension of the residential balconies and the accessible ramp up to the elevated plaza, the building would be built with a minimum 7'6" setback rather than up to the required five-foot setback. This would be 2 1/2 feet further back from the street than is required by the code. This request would result in a greater setback from the street. The CS zoning limits office uses to no more than 5,000 square feet per parcel. The zoning also contains a provision that allows the parcel to exceed this 5,000-square-foot limit with a conditional use permit. Since the four parcels that comprise the project site will be combined into one parcel, a conditional use permit to exceed the 5,000-square-foot limit of office space is included as part of the application. The total amount of office space proposed within the project is 16,118 square feet. This is only 21.7% of the total floor area within the project. The amount of office square footage is similar to the amount of retail floor area, providing a balance between the two uses while being considerably less than the proposed residential floor area within the project. At Places is a memo containing the responses to councilmember questions with a series of requested items attached, including the traffic consultant's letter explaining the change that was made to the traffic analysis prior to the planning commission's review, questions from Commissioner Keller, and staff responses, and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and a copy of Attachment F, which is a table indicating the parking distribution of various properties associated with the new project and the existing parking structure at 440 Portage. Staff and the planning commission and the architecture review board have reviewed the application and have recommended that the city council approve the project. The applicant, Heather Young, is here to make a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from the applicant. You guys are done, I assume?
Yes.
And the applicant will have 10 minutes?
Good job.
I'm Heather Young from Fergus Carver Young Architects, here to share the project with you this evening. As you can see, this is a sketch elevation in perspective of the drawing, looking at the El Camino Portage corner. And as staff described, the site-
Heather, it's a little soft. If you could get closer to the mic, or maybe pull it up. Thanks.
Sorry. As staff described, the site is on El Camino between Acacia and Portage, and you can see this L-shaped outline of the four parcels that are being joined, one being an existing at-grade and below-grade garage, the second, surface parking surrounding the We Fix Max store, the third is an existing building to remain, which is an extension of the Equinox Gym, and the fourth is another surface parking lot with showcase luxury cars space on it. The project is a mixed-use, as staff indicated, and the buildup is a mixture of restaurant-retail, commercial recreation, commercial office, and residential. And as we look at this corner perspective from El Camino and Portage, you'll see there's the existing Equinox expansion that is to remain in place. Then there is a retail-commercial corner, a commercial office area, a restaurant-retail zone along El Camino, and another commercial-retail area, and some building utilities. On the second floor is residential, small units, and another small office component. These spaces are double-height spaces facing El Camino. The third floor is commercial office and residential, more residential here. The fourth floor is exclusively residential, and these zones are vertical circulation towers. As you can see in this image, the corner at El Camino and Portage is to remain open as an exterior plaza. It's one of the comprehensive plan and El Camino design guidelines, is to support the corners with pedestrian activity and architectural interest. You can also see in this perspective the setback of the mechanical roof screen, and these smaller areas are the pop-up lofts that the design enhancement exception was approved through the architectural review board. You also see this fourth floor is exterior terrace, so the fourth-floor facade in this area is set back considerably from El Camino. This view from Acacia and El Camino, you can further see that not only is the fourth floor set back substantially from El Camino, but the third floor is also set back. But in all of these areas, we're providing outdoor terraces and gathering places to help enliven and activate the El Camino frontage. You're also seeing exterior balconies at the residential areas on all the sides to provide outdoor public space for the small residential units. If we look at the overall site plan, this being El Camino, Acacia, and Portage, you can see the small surface parking lot coming off of Portage. We've removed the additional, excuse me, the existing curb cut here, two curb cuts on El Camino, and two additional curb cuts from Acacia. Access to the existing surface parking in this area will be maintained, and access to the new below-grade parking under this development will be through the ramp to the below-grade parking here at 440 Portage. The other thing you're seeing in this view is the exterior corner plaza that I mentioned, and the mass of the building, although required to meet the 12-foot sidewalk along El Camino, has been opened up with a pedestrian dining arcade in this area and a pedestrian portal connecting El Camino to an interior courtyard. There's also an additional opening of the facade at the Acacia corner with a small portal. And we have a small video here that will just fly through these areas for you. Again, the El Camino corner, the dining portal, the pedestrian connection between El Camino and the central courtyard, and you can see the- floor, and the tower, another design feature. So here are some perspectives, and I believe these were left at place for you this evening. You can see the setback above the fourth floor away from El Camino, and in fact, from this view, you don't even see the mechanical roof terrace, the mechanical enclosures. You see the outdoor dining arcade, and then you see down through the arcade, and we're envisioning a good bit of pedestrian activity in this area. This is the portal from El Camino going into the central courtyard, and you can see the project is incorporating the existing structure on El Camino, which is the Equinox Gym as it comes out. As you go towards Acacia, again, another ground-level arcade, and then the double-height space with the large windows to allow pedestrian views in and out of the retail spaces. Here's that third floor that is set back and the fourth floor that's set back. The third floor, again, being commercial office space, and the fourth floor being residential units. This is a view of the interior courtyard with the stair tower accent and a pedestrian connection down to the existing parking lot and the current primary entrance for Equinox. As you go towards El Camino, you're seeing the outer facade of the residential units, and these are a mix of studios, one-bedrooms, and there's one single two-bedroom unit, and that's forty-eight total units. And this is the facade again on Acacia, the feature stair, the two floors of residential units. These are two very small commercial office floors, the double-height space here. Parking. There's an existing below-grade garage and at-grade parking area at four-forty Portage. The project will connect to a new below-grade garage, and these gray-shaded zones are triple-stacked parking machines. The white zones are vehicular aisles and also some surface parking. This is that vehicular aisle, and the triple-stack parking in diagram is, as you can see here. This is El Camino. City staff was able to join us to visit a project where this type of parking has been implemented over in Berkeley, and actually, you can see Jaime Rodriguez right there. There's a, this company has about two-hundred installations of this, of their parking systems in the Bay Area, and as you can see from this short video, each car has a reserved space. No other vehicle can use that space. And when you enter the garage, you hit a fob on a kiosk that knows your car, and it rearranges or shuffles the platforms such that your platform comes up, the gate opens, and you drive in. When you're ready to exit, you walk down, hit your fob on a kiosk, the machine shuffles again, and the gate opens, and you're able to go in and retrieve your vehicle. The time it takes for this is approximately no more than one minute, and that's for the largest machine that they have. It's pretty simple, and as I said, it is in use here in the Bay Area. Thank you. And actually, that was the end of my presentation.
So we're going to go to the public, and then you'll have three minutes at the end of the public presentation if you wish to use it.
Thank you very much.
All right. And now we'll go to our ARB Commissioner. Randy Popp is here, representing the ARB.
You don't time them. Just let him speak. Good evening, council members. My name is Randy Popp. I'm currently serving as Vice Chair of the Architectural Review Board. I'm here tonight as a representative of that board. On August 1st, and again on August 29th of this year, the ARB reviewed the proposal for 3159 El Camino Real. In a lengthy and detailed discussion, a wide spectrum of items were addressed by the board and the applicant. Our discussion ran the range of broad elements of overall project function and organization to many of the project details which reinforce its quality and character. At the conclusion of our meeting on the first, nine items were requested to be returned to the ARB. The list is in your packet, but some highlights from this list include: traffic ingress and egress points for further evaluation for visitors to the site in addition to delivery and move-in and move-out for residents, specifics for drawings including material placement, and further evaluation of the Acacia-El Camino corner. I'll roughly quote Board Member Lippert's statements from the August 1st meeting when he said, "This is such an important project in Palo Alto that is important we get it right. I think it has the ability to be a driving force of other mixed-use projects, and I would really like to be able at some point to cite this project and its use when we're reviewing other projects on El Camino Real." On the 29th, when the applicant returned, they provided a detailed packet with clear indication and explanation of their response to the nine items requested. The board discussed all of these and ultimately recommended approval of this elegant and desirable project with three manageable items to be returned to subcommittee. Thank you.
And now we'll go to Bob Moss.
Thank you, Mayor Sharf, and council members. I think this project is oversized, and it's going to have a horrible impact on traffic and parking in an area which is already heavily congested. As you know, El Camino and Page Mill operates at level F most of the day, and if you look at the traffic survey they did, they're saying there's going to be negative impacts as far away as Charleston. Some of the council members said, "What happens to intersections between Charleston and Page Mill?" And there was no real answer. But in one of the staff responses to Councilmember Holman, they talk about traffic trips, and they base it on land use, and they use a figure of forty-four apartments, but there are forty-eight apartments. So the traffic generation estimate is low. They estimate one-hundred-and-ninety-three trips per day. It'll be well over nine hundred. Now, you're being asked to give concessions because they're BMR units, but you're not required to give one-hundred percent of the concessions that they're requesting. So in order to scale this down, and by the way, the office space, over sixteen-hundred-thousand square feet, will generate approximately one hundred jobs. Also, I saw nothing in the traffic survey that talked about people driving to this area to get to Fry's because Portage is a main entrance and exit for Fry's. So what is the construction and occupancy of this site going to do to people who want to shop at Fry's? That's going to have some really negative impacts. And what you're going to find out is that in order to get to and from Fry's, people are going to start zigzagging through the neighborhood. So I would suggest that this be scaled down, and I'd like to see at least eleven-hundred square feet of office space removed. I'd also like to see more parking spaces on-site, because, as you know, if you don't have enough parking on-site, it spreads over into the neighborhood, and we're going to have people parking from this project all up and down Portage and down the side streets. So the office space that they're asking for is excessive, the size of the building they're asking for is excessive, and the negative impacts on the community are going to be horrible. One last thing, and the staff report on page eight, it talks about revenues, thirty-five to forty-five thousand dollars a year. What it doesn't talk about is expenses. Every apartment is going to cost the city twenty-five hundred dollars per year to service police, fire, public works, et cetera. That's a net loss of fifty thousand dollars a year.
Thank you. Marilyn Mayo, to be followed by Rob Lancefield.
Good evening. I'm Marilyn Mayo, and I generally am opposed to the density of this project. It's almost in my neighborhood, and there's three points I'd like to make this evening. In the last few years, it seems the quality of life has diminished in Palo Alto. I've been here forty years, and it seems to have been occurring in the last, say, five years, and I'm trying to figure out what's happening. And one idea I have is that the developers don't live in the neighborhood that they're developing. I live in this neighborhood. I work out at Equinox every day, so I use Portage. I can't imagine the parking situation. When you go in, it's packed, the lot, it's every hour on the hour. It's a very corporate kind of gym, and it's packed. You come out of Portage, you turn right to get to El Camino. There's a backlog there already. You turn right on El Camino, and then you get the traffic. Cars are trying to turn in the right-hand lane to get to Page Mill to get out. It's already jammed, probably a block or two long, right there, so I don't understand how you can add to that. The second question I have or thought is the ARB. I've witnessed, they do a great job, but they're looking at the building itself, not in the context, and how the total impact of many of these developments are going to impact one another. And you know you've got the other huge Paul project coming online in that area, too. And if you threw a dart for the epicenter of development, it just seems within four blocks of this neighborhood, it's happening. So if the ARB's doing their job, and, you know, but they're not catching all these developments, then it must be the zoning will pick it up and kind of tame things. But what happens is the zoning is being overridden because of all these exemptions. It could be PC, and then this one is the state density bonus if you have below-market. So if you add five of those, then you can waive the zoning. So the projects come in. So that's how I'm figuring out the game is played, and I just really think it's too dense. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Lancefield, to be followed by Art Lieberman.
Good evening, Mayor Sharf and members of the city council. My name's Rob Lancefield. I live at 189 Water Hayes Drive. I'm here to speak tonight in opposition to the proposal on several grounds. The first ground is that fifty-five feet is five feet too high. And the second point is, and from the presentation by the architect, it wasn't clear to me why you needed a two-story first floor, first and second floor. Take some of that double floor out and shorten it down, pull the whole building down by five feet. Maybe this has been discussed, but it was not discussed here, and I'm here to tell you tonight that the voters spoke when they voted against Measure D, which I voted for. But it's like there's been a cultural change in the city. Personally, I'm here to speak to you as a former trustee, and you are all trustees. I have seen, as a trustee, how it is very easy for applicants, beneficiaries, in this case, the developer, to make decisions early on, calculating, calculating, that if you just wait and kind of frame the issue until it gets to you guys, then it is hard for you to say no. But it would have been much more helpful to the council and to everybody else if the staff from the get-go had said, "No, fifty feet is the limit. Work within it." And if that had gone, you would not be faced with this issue tonight, and you get looking at all the trivia and the exceptions. So I think that the basic decision you need to make is to table this and tell the people, the developer, to go back and work within a fifty-five-foot limit, fifty-foot limit, and while he's at it, he ought to come up with some revenue projections about what it would mean to him if he get the fifty-five instead of fifty. So thank you.
Thank you. Art Lieberman, to be followed by Herb Barra.
Good evening, Art Lieberman. I live on Tmalas. Good evening, council people. I spoke at the PTC meeting when this project was discussed before them in July, and I mentioned traffic issues, and I want to speak about that again. The traffic created by one project extends well beyond the immediate area of the project. The late Senator Dirksen said, quote, "A billion here, a billion there, and pretty soon you're talking about real money." For developments in Palo Alto, a few hundred extra trips here, a few hundred extra trips there, and pretty soon you're talking about real congestion. Palo Alto is now doing just that with traffic from new developments, and it's wrong. Instead, a comprehensive area-wide traffic study should be at hand before new projects are discussed. New projects should not be just added one by one and intersections tinkered with for this project in a footnote at an appendix in a staff report. The staff report on page thirty-three of Appendix F mentions the potential for a significant impact at the El Camino and Erastodero Road intersection, which is one-and-a-half miles away. And I think you've heard enough about, from our neighborhood, about the issues about Erastodero. The point is that traffic created by one project extends well beyond the immediate area, and so it sounds quite sensible that you really need to have a comprehensive traffic plan for El Camino. Where is it? Without this, how can you possibly understand whether the road infrastructure is able to support this project or any project? The traffic study for the current project includes a staff estimate of one percent traffic growth per year. Where did that come from? Picked out of the air? It sure seems like it's been more like three or five percent the last few years. Also, the VTA methodology rates the intersections from A to F, and some, Page Mill and El Camino, for example, are already F. Are we just going to allow more and more without a limit? Without a study, the answer seems to be yes. It seems manifestly obvious that a comprehensive traffic plan is necessary before sensible evaluation could be done of any individual project. The procedure being followed by the Transportation Division now stuffs each project, proposed project, into its traffic's computer program. It's akin to stuffing more and more into a balloon, and now the balloon is about to pop, if it hasn't already popped. So I'm not against development in Palo Alto, nor am I neighbors, and for this area of, for this area of city or elsewhere, but only if it's part of an overall plan that is based on sensible growth that does not overwhelm our already stressed traffic infrastructure. It's not that I'm worried about Palo Alto becoming like San Francisco and New York. I'm worried that it will become like Sao Paulo. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Barra, to be followed by Tom DuBois.
Mayor Sharf and council members, I urge you to deny and reject the mitigating negative declaration, to deny the applications for conditional use permit and for design enhancement exceptions. The proposal to have the excess traffic for the additional office space above that that requires the conditional use permit and the lack of guest parking both create potentially significant impacts that have not been mitigated, and therefore it's a violation of the California Environmental Quality Act to approve the mitigated negative declaration. The state housing density bonus law, Government Code, Section 65915, is silent about guest parking. It has numbers for parking for numbers of bedrooms, just as the Palo Alto zoning code development regulations have parking requirements for numbers of bedrooms, and therefore it replaces those, but it is silent about guest parking, and guest parking is required in the residential portion, and none is provided here. So that's a violation of the zoning code and a violation of the California Environmental Quality Act. The proposal to use most of the floor area concession for the office part of the project is something that was considered in a general way by the Regional Housing Mandate Committee on Thursday, whereby a vote of three to one, it was the intent of the committee that- development regulations have parking requirements for numbers of bedrooms, and therefore it replaces those, but it is silent about guest parking, and guest parking is required in the residential portion, and none is provided here. So that's a violation of the zoning code and a violation of the California Environmental Quality Act. The proposal to use most of the floor area concession for the office part of the project is something that was considered in a general way by the Regional Housing Mandate Committee on Thursday, whereby a vote of three to one, it was the intent of the committee that any such additional floor area can only be used on the residential portion of the property. When you receive the committee's recommendation, the language may have to be improved to implement the committee's intent, but you know from just common experience, common knowledge, the difference in parking and traffic on days in which we don't have all those employees here. Clearly, that placing all that extra floor area on the office part of the project is significantly more of an impact in terms of parking and traffic than using it on the residential portion. But in any event, you would still need a conditional use permit, and the conditional use permit should be denied. Thank you.
Tom DuBois, be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
I am Tom DuBois, residing at 3310 South Court, and a member of the Palo Altons to preserve neighborhood zoning. With regard to 3159 El Camino, I ask the City Council to send the project back to committee to be considered in a more comprehensive fashion, along with 2755 El Camino and the J-Paul 395 Page Mill project. All three of these projects are within two-tenths of a mile of each other. Mayor Scharf has expressed a desire for moratorium on PC zoning. I ask you to extend that moratorium to this project in order to have time to consider the cumulative impacts of these three projects, in order to take a thoughtful and holistic action, and to be able to prioritize the relative merits and the corresponding zoning concessions. Thus far, each of these projects has been considered in isolation, and the Ventura neighborhood deserves kind of a mini comprehensive plan, a cohesive look at these projects together, what it's going to mean to their quality of life. El Camino and Page Mill is the most congested intersection in Palo Alto. There's one new development on Pageville next to the AT&amp;T Building, already underway, and so are others at 195 Page Mill and at Birch and Sheridan. Traffic impacts from this project added to those is going to be significant, and there is going to be lots of cut-through through the neighborhood. I believe the traffic study was done in December of 2010, and did not consider any of the projects now planned or already under construction. A few more months in order to do a combined review and a complete traffic study, using the latest VTA guidelines for the California Avenue Development Area, is a small price to pay for cluster buildings that are going to be with us for fifty years or more. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Munoz, to be followed by Joseph Hirsch. Yes, Joe's the last one.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'd like to endorse what the previous speakers have said. I couldn't say it any better, but I have just a little bit of a take on it. Councilmember Niss, a few months back, expressed surprise and dismay that the state, through AVAG, could tell Palo Alto that it had to become more dense. And I, nobody in the, in the meeting room stood up and cheered, but, but I think the general feeling was she was right, and you got that referendum. It's, it seems to me that you have planning commissions, you have good planners, and you do good plans, and then somebody comes along and second-guesses them, and you change them. And one of the people is the state of California. I really do not think that a density bonus is an appropriate response to citizens of California who pay taxes and, and obey the laws and do everything they're supposed to do. They do not want more density. I don't think anybody is going to disagree that the density in the business, in the business area, is at the expense of the residents who have to be driven across and driven through. I don't think any one of you would disagree with that. So when you see a density bonus, I think it's time for you to pick on somebody your own size. Sure, you can defend the neighborhoods from the homeless. There's not much glory in that. Well, you have, you have Rich Gordon, you have, we have, we have people to help get what the residents want, and I think deserve, which is more low-density. Mainly, the parking should be addressed. For, for someone to say, "Well, it's not a concession that they have less parking. It's a state mandate," that's not exactly true. It is a concession that's mandated by the state, and don't let them do it. The same thing with, with the 611 cowper. You know that you're going to pay for it, if somebody's going to pay for it down the line, but bite the bullet and stop it now. I think you have a group of concerned residents that'll help you. If, if the 611 cowper people say, "Well, you told us we could do it," I, I think that the people who did the referendum would go and picket and tell them that they cannot build a building that is not parked. Thank you. Good luck.
Joe Hirsch.
I walked the site this morning at nine AM. Traffic on El Camino was heavy, as always, but it at least was moving, but we all know it's going to get worse in the future. It's hard to believe that a forty-eight-unit apartment building plus almost twenty-five-thousand square feet of new office and commercial retail space would generate only one hundred new trips per day, given that there are virtually none there right now. If all are a significant number of the residents, and presumably at nine hundred square feet per unit, there could be one, two, or three residents per apartment, each of them comes and goes by car, that alone would be hundred units per day, hundred trips per day, completely disregarding any new trips associated with the almost twenty-five-thousand square feet of new office and commercial retail space. Thus, the projected number of one hundred new trips per day simply doesn't make any sense. Traffic from the development, whatever it will be, plus traffic from other developments in the pipeline, including, for example, the one proposed at the northeast corner of El Camino and Page Mill, and the ones also mentioned a few minutes ago by Tom DuBois, will currently make traveling on El Camino much worse than it always is, and it's not good now. Excuse me. Parking is admittedly inadequate, at least thirty-one spaces, because of the state incentives reduction, with no allocation for guest parking at all. There were no parking spaces available on Portage this morning, and only three of the approximately thirty spaces on Acacia. What will happen when the Acacia-El Camino parcel is developed, as presumably it will be sometime soon? Where will people go to park if no spaces are available? To the nearby residential streets between Acacia and Page Mill? Does the state care as much as the city should if there is an inadequate number of parking spaces? Were the state's incentives established for denser urban areas or a suburban area like Palo Alto? If they make the area around the project worse, not better, we expect that the project should not be approved. So why does council keep approving projects that they know or should know that the impacts of the project, coupled with the cumulative impacts of other projects, are significant and not wanted by the residents? Who do you represent, developers or the people who elected you? I was distributing flyers and talking with people before the recent election. It's pretty clear in their minds that you are favoring developers by very lenient in granting exemptions. It seems that we have a city staff, an ARB, a Planning and Transportation Commission, and most of all, a city council that simply can't say no to developers. With all due respect to Rogers and Hammerstein, start tonight by saying, "Come on, let's go," and saying nix to the development that has numerous shortcomings that will make, along with other projects nearby, create additional impacts that simply are not desired by the people of Palo Alto.
Thanks, Joe.
Who elected you. Thank you.
All right, councilmembers. At this time, our rules call for each of us to disclose any contacts with the applicant on this item, and to disclose any information you received that is not already part of the public record. Are there any disclosures? Okay. Now, if the applicant wants to do any rebuttal.
Could I ask a question? I don't know whether you want the disclosure, or we have been to the site, and let me look at, at counsel for that.
In an abundance of caution, it would be appropriate if you'd like to disclose that so that everyone can, can know what the information is.
So, yes, I have visited the site. It was between three and four o'clock. There is considerably, there's a great deal of parking on the street, at least that, that time of the day. I don't know what it would be at five o'clock. I drove back along El Camino around four, and the traffic had not yet picked up, even though I know it probably would later. But yes, I have visited the site. I have not talked with anyone involved with the project.
Councilmember Holman.
I visited the site yesterday a couple of times, just trying to get the lay of the land and understand the complexities of the project and where the various elements were.
Councilmember Shepherd.
I am a member of Equinox Gym, so I'm over there fairly frequently. I'm familiar with the traffic patterns and the issues that are related to this as well. I have not spoken to the owner on this project, although I do know the owner, but I have not been, I have not received any information or had contact on this project.
Councilmember Berman.
I'm embarrassed to say that I haven't been to the site nearly enough, but I go as often as I can. I'm also a member of the Equinox Gym, and I was also at the site for about an hour and a half today, walking around the entire huge extended block that includes Fry's and other areas around there.
And I also visited the site today. Oh, Councilmember Klein.
Yes, I have, I also visited the site today and spent approximately an hour there and walked around it in the, in the early, mid-afternoon. I noted that there were a number of parking spaces available on both Portage and a lot on Acacia, and I had not had any contact with the owner or the proposed developer or their architects.
And now we'll go to the applicant. If the applicant wishes to say anything for up to three minutes.
I'd like to thank you all for your time and attention to this project. We are here to answer any specific questions that you might have. There are a couple of additional slides, section, another plan. We also have Jim Dyasa from Kimley Horn, the traffic consultants, here to answer questions that you might have, and I believe that the representative from the PTC is here if you have any questions about the discussions that occurred during that meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we return to council for questions, comments, motions, et cetera. Councilmember Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to the applicant and the public for framing the issues very well. I really appreciated the excellent slideshow prepared by the applicant. The debate thing was very clear. I have a number of questions for staff. My first, and maybe this is for the applicant as well, deals with the parking. It was nice to see the puzzle parking, which I must say is a strange phrase, but for what staff has learned, how has this type of parking been received by the residents of the, of the projects that, to the best of your knowledge? Since there are two hundred around the Bay Area, I'm assuming that we were able to put in, get in contact with some of those cities.
You guys have an answer?
Well, I can say that I was in Berkeley during the installation of a number of the first of those parking situations, and I would say, I think people pretty quickly adapted, but it was strange at first, obviously, would be the, the concept, and that was when they were some of the first ones that were being implemented. But I think the fact of actually how quickly things, things do work, I don't remember ever getting any kind of complaints from the public or anything about, about it when I was there. But again, it's, it's different, obviously, than what people are used to, so I think there is a kind of adaptation to it first.
But your experience was that people did use them and they didn't?
Oh, yeah. I mean, people, yeah, no, people don't, weren't, were not parking elsewhere because of that.
Okay. I want to talk a little bit about the condition, or ask some questions about the conditional use permit. And if I'm recalling that you're asking for a conditional use permit for the, whatever it is, fifteen or sixteen thousand square feet of office space, and I'm assuming, this wasn't clear to me from the written report, that the justification for this is that there are four lots there now, and each one of those lots could have five thousand square feet of office space, and that by having, whatever it is, fifteen or sixteen thousand on this now one merged lot, that this is less than would be the case if each of the four lots was developed individually?
You're absolutely right. That's the question I asked. The use permit was required of the project very conservatively. It probably could have been processed without it, particularly if they maintained the four lots throughout the process, and it could have gotten even more.
That's interesting. Are you, in effect, saying that this project could have moved forward as one on, on four lots, that the, that the lot merger wasn't required?
Due to the fact that the buildings straddle the property lines, you would need to merge the parcels.
Speak up a little more slowly, please.
Due to the fact that the buildings would straddle the property lines, if the lots were not merged, you wouldn't be able to build the project as proposed, so you do need to merge the parcels.
Can I ask a question, though, a different way? Could a project have been designed with the buildings not crossing the property lines and had, you know, greater density than this?
There could have been four separate projects on four separate properties that had?
Okay, so that would have reduced twenty thousand square feet, and here we're having roughly four thousand square feet less.
And if I just might add something to that, because I think that that question is illustrative of other questions that might come, which is consideration of the benefits of design goals, and a good design may, may create some changes that appear one way, but the default existing entitlement could actually provide, in this case, more, more density as related to office use in a much less appealing and less attractive design.
Thank you on that. Now, I want to turn to the height exception, and correct me if I'm stating it wrong. So my question is first, how I understand this, that first, under our existing rules, mechanical facilities can exceed the fifty feet, indeed go to as high as sixty-five feet, and that this, like almost any other project, would have mechanicals on the roof, and they would be roughly five feet over the, at fifty-five feet, and that the pop-ups of the loft units, not the entire fourth floor, but just portions of it, would go up fifty-five feet to match, in effect, the mechanicals. Is that a correct understanding?
Yes, that's correct.
And I would just point out, if, if the council were to decide not to grant that exception, we'd still have a fifty-five-foot-tall building there. So the exception is simply allowing part of that occupied area to extend into that top five feet of the building.
Thank you. And my further understanding is that the, to the extent that those loft units extend to the fifty-five feet, it really doesn't increase the square footage that's allowed, because that's under a different calculation. Or, to put it another way, they have, given the bonus density and so forth, they have a seventy-thousand-square-foot, roughly, budget, and they, they can use it in a variety of ways, and one way they're suggesting, for aesthetic reasons, is to use this pop-up. But if we said no to that, they, in effect, could stretch the building wider and use the same amount of square feet. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Could, could I just add to that?
Sure.
Couldn't they step the building forward up and have more of a? Couldn't they step the building forward up and have more of a sheer wall along El Camino Real under the existing zoning?
Yes, they could.
That's the point on this design, also, the ability to step these back.
All right. So we're starting with the square footage number and working back, and that the five foot on the height limit doesn't change the square foot budget. Correct? Okay. The state mandates, and I would have to agree with some of our speakers, I don't like state mandates. I don't like the loss of local control. But we are citizens of California, and we're bound to obey the law. We just can't say, we might ask our assembly in a person to try to get the law changed, but the law is the law, and we have to obey it. But that said, these concessions that are in the staff report and so forth are required, we're required to obey them. Is that correct?
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Kara Silver, Senior Assistant City Attorney. Given the fact that the applicant is proposing to deed restrict 10% of the units for affordable housing, they are legally entitled to one concession. And they have requested the concession to be an FAR bonus. Since we do not have a local ordinance that prioritizes these concessions as of right now, we are in the process of adopting one, we must fall back on this existing state density bonus law, and this concession is required.
Would it be any different if our proposed ordinance was now in effect?
Given the recent comments that the regional housing committee had on our ordinance, there is an FAR bonus that is in the preferred menu of concessions, and there were some limitations that the committee did place on the use of that FAR bonus. So I'm not sure exactly how it would impact this particular project, but the FAR was limited by the committee to a certain percentage. And I haven't run the numbers for this particular project.
I think the committee's recommendation was to limit the FAR bonus idea to residential uses only. So if this project had come forward after that recommendation made it to council and the ordinance was adopted, they wouldn't be able to seek the additional FAR for the commercial square footage without providing a pro forma and going through a more elaborate process. So that's where the committee left it last week.
Okay. The density bonus seems to me not to be the only concession. Don't we also now have the result of the state mandate that we can't require the same number of parking spaces?
Yes, that's correct. Under the state density bonus law, there is also a limitation on the city's ability to require additional parking if the applicant requests reduced parking.
Which they have here.
And, yes, they have.
Okay, so the parking does meet the state requirement, and the state requirement trumps our requirement.
That's correct. And I will add that the state requirement does not allow for the city to impose additional parking requirements, such as guest parking, as one of the speakers suggested.
Is that clear?
It is clear that the city cannot impose additional parking requirements.
Okay. So my jackpot question is, what is our discretion here?
Maybe I can take a stab at that, and staff will bail me out if I get this wrong. I think that's a very good question. Obviously, you've heard that the FAR issue and the parking issue are really out of our hands. It's a state requirement, nothing we can do about it. The things that are within our purview is the 55-foot design exception, as you indicated. This is a choice. The council could approve that or not. Again, if you choose not to go forward with that, we're still going to have a 50-foot, a 55-foot-high building. It's going to lose some of the architectural features, which we believe make it more acceptable. Another area of discretion is the setback, the design exception for the setback. But that speaks directly to one of, what I understand to be, the council's interest in seeing greater setbacks along some of these streets, so a more pedestrian area.
Excuse me, I just want to make sure I understand that, and this was such a reversal from what we've been doing, that if we turned down the setback requirement here, whatever, actually, the building then would come closer to the street?
That's correct. That's correct. So the exception is allowing them to set the building back farther from the street wall.
Okay. And what's our other, any other discretions?
The other area of discretion is the use permit, conditional use permit for the square footage. But you, as you indicated, basically, they would be allowed more than that square footage if they retain the four separate lots. And then the other area of discretion is with regard to the mitigated negative declaration. Obviously, we've prepared a SEQA document based on our analysis, and we're asking the council to accept that as part of this action.
Okay. And other than the mitigated negative deck, if we said no to the applicant on any or all of those three other items, the applicant could then redesign the project to come within them, and the matter would never return to the council. Is that correct?
When you have more than five dwelling units within a mixed-use project, it is required to go through site and design review, which requires planning, commission, and council review. So you would still see the project.
Oh, okay. But the council then would have no grounds for turning it down. Is that right?
Well, there's a lot of discretion related to the particulars of the project. It would be different.
Not the main components and the bones of the project. The council could tinker with the design elements, but when you, the concerns about the FAR and those sorts of things.
Yes, so we could insist that the project be blue rather than gray, but it would be still a 70,000-square-foot project. Okay. Well, given those facts, I will move acceptance of the staff recommendation, including the mitigated negative deck and the three options, three areas where we have discretion.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
That's a motion by councilor.
And that's a motion by Councilmember Klein, and second by Councilmember Price. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, just briefly, hope briefly. I want to be very clear as to what this is not. This is not an APC. The city has very limited discretion, as I hope has been made clear by the dialogue we've had with staff. And it's not a zone change for the same reason. A lot of the questioners seem, or speakers from the public tonight, seem to think we have a lot more power than we do. And one of the things that council members are obligated to do is follow the law. That seems pretty basic to me. And we don't, we can protest and try to get the state law changed, but it is in effect. So that I may regret not having more discretion, but the council does not. And I think what's ironic is that we've heard a lot of statements during the last campaign that citizens wanted us to follow the zoning and not make any changes, such as an APC. And what we have here tonight is an applicant who, with three, and I think very small exceptions, and I think at least two out of those three are in favor of what most citizens want in our community, is following the zoning. This is an application that is in, within the zoning, as our zoning is affected by state law. So if we're going to be consistent and sincere, we have to recognize when something is within the existing zoning. And to go beyond that, I think there's a lot of merit to this project. Maybe if I had total discretion, as we have sometimes in PCs, I might see things somewhat differently. And maybe we ought to take a look at changing the zoning up and down El Camino. But citizens, and who knows what the majority of our citizens really mean, what they said by voting. I've talked to people, and they have different views as to why they voted a certain way. That's always the case. But if, so zoning changes have some inherent problems as well. But we have to take our applications as they are and the law as it is. And I think that this project fits within the law, the exceptions, I think granted, we would be granting if we pass this motion, enhance the project rather than take away from it. So I hope my colleagues will join me in voting yes.
Councilmember Price.
Yes, thank you. I had one question, and then I'd like to make comments. It's related to the mitigated negative declaration and the traffic study. The findings indicate these various elements are less than significant impact. However, it does note that there is an impact as it relates to El Camino and West Charleston Road and Arastudero. And it suggests in the mitigated negative deck that it can be mitigated with the addition of a southbound West Charleston Road right turn overlap signal phase. Now, are we to assume that this identified mitigation, because I don't remember, is bolted into this project and related to the conditions, the conditions of the conditional use permit? Who is responsible for making those modifications at that identified intersection is my question.
Thank you, Councilmember Price. The applicant will be the responsible party. However, both the city and Caltrans will have to work together, since it's a dual-controlled intersections in terms of jurisdiction, to decide when exactly that signal timing would have to be implemented.
Now, with that, given El Camino's a state highway, I understand that, and the county has a role as well, what are the assurances we have that that is an identified project that will be in our capital projects, that will be funded, and the timing is sensitive as it relates to the potential development of this site?
Good evening. My name is Jaime Rodriguez. I'm the Chief Transportation Official for the City of Palo Alto. I just want to take a moment to clarify. The specific recommendation for mitigation at the intersection of El Camino and Charleston is actually strictly just signal timing modifications. In this specific case, the recommendations include to increase the cycle length at the intersection, which would be the responsibility for us and the applicant to work with Caltrans. But Caltrans has the ultimate discretion as to whether or not they would make the modifications to the signal timing. There aren't any, I believe, but Councilmember Price, you mentioned a comment about a capacity increase for a right turn lane. That is not the recommendation, recommended mitigation of the project.
Let's see. Addition of southbound overlap signal phase. So again, what is the leverage we have to actively push to get this kind of a signal timing and other improvements made in a timely way? I mean, I know it's up to their discretion, but, you know, we are the community within which these, you know, activities are happening. So what do we have in terms of leverage to ensure that that's done efficiently and quickly if this were to be approved?
I'm going to ask Jim from Kimley Horn to, again, quickly specify, clarify the recommended mitigation, and then I'll come back and talk a bit more about the discretion we have with Caltrans.
Thank you. Jim Daisa, Kimley Horn Associates. The mitigation measure, as Mr. Rodriguez said, is simply signal timing change. Not, there's no capital improvement required. It's an electronic change, but it's mitigating an impact that occurs in the projected year of 2025, which seems like a long way off to start signal timing. The mitigation monitoring report requires an evaluation currently. So what I would suggest the city does, if you want leverage, you can request the applicant to put up a bond or put money in escrow, their portion of the funding that would be required to do the actual study and the implementation of the signal timing, and put, have that money go into an account that is, contributes to maybe a corridor-wide signal timing or synchronization project or individual signals in the area. But you don't want to wait till 2025 to actually use the money. I think it would just behoove you to use it for nearby improvements to signal timing. But you can get the money upfront from them for their cost to have done that in 2025. But in 2025, you will not have any leverage to obtain the funds. So you need to get it immediately around the building permit time.
Now, you work in doing a traffic analysis. I mean, other cities face this all the time. So what is your recommendation to them to do what you're suggesting?
That's one way. Others have set up accounts for what they call miscellaneous traffic signal funds. And you, instead, you know, the city would have a citywide fee, impact fee program, but they don't have specifically identified every single intersection in the city. So they have a separate account for miscellaneous traffic signal improvements, which include installing traffic signals or timing or modifications to the signal.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rodriguez, I have a question for you. To what degree have we done what he's suggesting in terms of a kind of a general, kind of dedicated fund for these kinds of signal timing issues that may come up throughout, you know, the, within the boundaries of Palo Alto? I don't remember.
Thank you, Councilmember Price. I don't recall any specific projects, at least within the last three years, where we've had specific funds set aside for future traffic signal modifications or timing. In the case of working with the state, we actually have a fairly good working relationship with them, and we're actually working on a citywide signal retiming process with them now. We could definitely ask the state to make sure that this is being considered now. Again, one good approach is to ask the developer to set up some funding to accommodate that timing change later. Just to frame it for you, the cost of doing a retiming at an intersection is probably about between $2,500 to $3,500.
$2,500 to $3,500?
It's just strictly a traffic signal retiming.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Speaking to the motion, I won't repeat all the comments that Councilmember Klein mentioned. I think the fact that, my reading of this, and as I understand the various elements of it, this does meet the basic direction of our comprehensive plan, particularly along El Camino. It's a very well-designed and very well-functioning mixed-use project. I think one part that I find particularly appealing is that in this ongoing debate about housing in the City of Palo Alto, it does directly address issues identified in the housing element. And as I read this report, it also identifies this area as a housing opportunity site, if I'm not mistaken. It's very clear to me that in order to have a vigorous economy and to continue to have job growth, we have various issues that we need to balance and trade off. And this project, I think, does that very well. You have retail, you have office, and you have residential. With the smaller units, as I understand it, a lot of the residents of the very small units do not all own cars. They do not all own multiple cars, and that's also true of BMR units. And so I think some of the discussion about the multi, well, the potential for multi-car ownership is one that we need to be thinking about when we look at these units. I think we do need a variety of housing products in this community to address the broad range of housing needs. Many people in different economic situations, different parts in the life cycle, have different housing needs. And I think the smaller units do provide very good opportunities for people. And I think the smaller units do provide very good opportunities for people. And it's also true that its location is quite close to Caltrain. And in terms of the employee base, I think you could, with some assurance, note that many people will likely take transit, and some of the younger workers don't even own cars. And I think many of us in our own families have witnessed that and are familiar with it. I think the setbacks add additional value to the design of the building. I'm very interested in the pedestrian, the quality of the pedestrian experience. We all know El Camino needs great improvement in that area, and by reducing some access and egress on the El Camino corridor, I thought, I think that definitely increases pedestrian safety. It is, does support the El Camino guidelines. It does support some of the basic concepts of the Grand Boulevard. So for those reasons and others, I am very interested in supporting the motion before us, and I hope my colleagues will agree. And thank you for the staff work, and thank you for the community comments.
Councilmember Schmidt.
I like the mixed-use project that's before us, combination of putting in substantial housing, commercial, plus retail, of having a street front turned into retail space with people congregating around a restaurant and in the arcades. I do, though, have a couple of questions over the limited issues that the council has some discretion on. I guess the first is the granting of the DEE on height. Now, my understanding of the design enhancement exception is you're doing it because it looks better. Now, the only picture we have of the facade of the building, which shows that on table A0 dot two, shows that fifth floor has unbroken line across the top of the building in a facade which down below has interesting features to it, and all of a sudden here it becomes a straight block, like a kid putting a block on top of something, with little port windows along the way. Now, I'm not an architect or an artist, but that is not very convincing as a design enhancement. So if you're asking me to vote to say this is a great design enhancement, I'd have a hard time doing that. I, I don't think that's adds to the project. Bigger issue for me is the mitigated negative declaration, especially on the traffic side. We are adding, well, roughly in cars, about 250 cars here. These are the required parking. So the anticipation is that's the number of cars that will be stationed here. 850 trips per day. The conclusion is there won't be more than 100 during rush hour periods. That seems to me, I guess, how do you calculate the number of trips in a peak hour?
Well, good evening, council. Jim Dasa, Kimley Horn Associates, again. I'm not sure where those numbers came from that you're reciting, Councilmember Schmidt. There's a table in our traffic study that shows the calculation of trips. And we use trip generation.
I guess it comes from your statement to the PTC on packet page 614, where you say, "In our estimates, traffic generate did not generate more than 100 trips in any given period."
That's true. It's actually much lower than 100, so I might have made a statement that was very conservative. We, so you're asking how we calculate?
Yes.
The trips? We use a standard set of research publications from the Institute of Transportation Engineers as a starting point. They've been collecting trip generation studies of different land use types for about 40 years now. And there's a large document that statistically combines all these studies together to give us what we call rates, number of trips per unit of development. That can be trips per housing unit, trips per thousand square feet of commercial, et cetera, et cetera. And we use those as a starting point. We might make adjustments to them, up or down, depending on local conditions. So this project generates approximately 893 trips per day. And in the peak hours, in the AM peak hours, 22 trips in the morning and 27 trips in the PM peak hour, the afternoon.
27?
Yes.
Now, I guess you have 64 parking spaces for office. You mean to say you have 64 people working there?
I'm sorry. I have to interrupt you because I, I was reading just the apartment. The total peak hour, PM peak hour and AM peak hour, is it 99, let's see, adjusted, 89 trips in the morning, all the uses put together. My mistake earlier. And 70 trips in the afternoon peak hour, all the uses put together.
Okay, let me pursue that you say the ITE is the base source. A couple of weeks ago, we were asked to approve a contract for an updated traffic study for the city. And the mandate to the company we signed on with was, had the statement, "ITE standards are unrealistic for a mixed-use downtown environment." Now, I'm just a poor council member, but you asked me a couple of weeks ago to vote that, and now you asked me to vote support because you use the ITE, which is right?
Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. Like Jim mentioned, it really depends on the type of project that we're evaluating at the time. Some projects-
This is a mixed-use downtown environment.
I understand. And so what we typically do is we start with IT trip generation as a starting point, and then we look at the generation rates that are, and trips that are result from those trip generation rates. And we, and we'll at times ask the developer to do a comparative analysis of, say, a different location if the project that's being recommended is not consistent with what the IT generation rates are, or if there's not enough supporting data in the generation rate that's being recommended out of the IT trip generation manual. In the specific case for this project, all of the various types of uses that are being recommended on the project have a substantial amount of supporting projects to require, or to, to use the rates that are being recommended. So a, a recommendation to do a comparative analysis wasn't required for this project.
Okay, now, the MND in the introduction, that is the instructions for me, says, "All activity must be taken into account with the whole action involved, including both onsite as well as offsite. Lead agencies should incorporate references to information sources for potential impacts." Can you supply us with these detailed tables and the ones you accept and the ones you don't accept? How, how can we make that judgment?
I know a little bit about the trip generation process. I've completed a seven-year research project for the National Cooperative Highway Research Program. That's TRB, Transportation Research Board, on trip generation of urban infill land uses. And yes, I agree that ITE rates are oftentimes not appropriate for urban infill land uses because it's way too high. These are very conservative estimates, and they're based on studies of suburban land uses, isolated suburban land uses, because it's easy to collect data at those land uses. So what we're estimating comes out to be 40% higher than what will really be estimated, and I've shown that in my research project, which is, you published this month. So I know from just collecting empirical data and comparing it that these are high, overestimations.
Okay, it would be good to see your study when it comes out. Let me go one step further. You say, not just on the trip generation, but counting intersections that are impacted, that there is an impact on El Camino and Charleston.
Yes.
How did you measure those and when were those measured?
The counts.
Mm-hmm.
Keep in mind, the impact that we, we identified was in the year 2025. But first, we start with traffic counts, and we'll go out and take Tuesday through Thursday, typical days. We look for days that there's nothing else going on, it's unusual, like holidays or big, large events nearby, and we want to make sure schools in session, just a typical day that's supposed to represent some average, but above-average day of the week in the year. So it's, it's hard to actually pinpoint a precise time, but we just have some general rules of thumb that we use. We go out and count the traffic. We compare it with other traffic counts at the same location historically to make sure that everything looks like it's either growing or staying about the same.
And could you tell me the dates?
If you give me a moment, I will find the dates in this traffic study. And while I'm looking for those dates, I'll go on to explain how we get the cumulative numbers as well. There is a growth factor that was applied that you've, you heard mention, 1%, 1.1% actually per annum. What we do is we take the Santa Clara VTA model, and we look at their projections of growth at the approaches of the intersections. We take the total incremental change in growth over existing conditions. We divide that by the number of years in between, and we get an average annual rate of growth that we, then we then apply to the traffic counts. So it's not just an arbitrary number, it is, it's based on the growth projections of land use that the Valley Transportation Agency's model is based on. So we took our traffic counts in November, the counts were conducted November 7th, 2012, between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM in the morning, and 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM in the evening.
Okay, thank you. Now, those are the base counts, and you say, oh, we're a year later, so it's grown 1.1%. Now, a number of people have pointed out, driving around town, there are, seem to be much faster rates of growth. Now, in addition, people have pointed out that there's a number of approved and projects that are being built that were not online in November of 2012, just within the mile or so distance of that. There's the VMware buildings that will be opening up, the 200, well, the VTA lot, which is currently in process, the 195-page mill, which is in process. And there's the Stanford Hospital, which is a substantial project. Now, cumulative impacts are something that are quite significant. And as they come online, one at a time, people say, gee, where did these come from? Each of those projects I've mentioned already has an approved traffic impact study done three, four, some cases, five years ago. So how, how do we take into account not the VTA 1% growth, but what's actually taking place in our city?
Thank you, Councilmember-
Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. I'm sorry, Councilmember Schmidt, maybe I can interject. This is a subject that is interesting to me. I've been working on, in the world of CQ review and this question of cumulative impacts for many years now, and it's very clear in the CQ statutes and guidelines that there are two methods to approach that question. The cumulative impacts can be analyzed by looking at a list of projects, and you articulated several projects that you would include on a list if you use that methodology. And sequel impacts can be analyzed by using a projections-based approach. It's clear, based on the description of the methodology in the study, that the VTA model uses that projections-based approach. And so the question that, you know, should be asked is not, you know, well, what about the list? It's, is the, are the projections that are included in the model sufficient to, we think, capture the cumulative impacts? And obviously, you know, VTA is using this tool. They believe it to be appropriate for this area. I know that the city isn't-
The VTA does. Do we have discretion to make that choice?
Well, I, I was going to say, I think, I'm aware that the city would like to do better than that. You know, it has begun investing in an updated model that uses different projections. Here, we have a project that's been in review since January of this year, and so we used for our analysis, it's clear from the paperwork here, the best available tool that was available to us at the time, and it used this projection-based approach rather than the list-based approach.
Are we keeping annual traffic counts of key intersections so that we have our own historical base?
Now we are. I don't know how far back we go, but now we are.
Okay, one other question. The mitigation is to implement a single-cycle length optimization and reallocation of the green time at that intersection. Now, it would be nice as a mitigation to say, oh, we need a green light for more right turns. But of course, at any intersection, a green light for someone means a red light for someone else. Now, that happens to be a key east-west corridor that carries not just heavy traffic, but major migration of school kids into four schools on the other side. As a matter of fact, we publish maps of how to get to school, and that intersection is critical for four schools migrating across. So how can we get an extended green light for a right turn? Who gets the red light?
Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. The specific recommendation is to increase the cycle length. So I'm only going to cite examples unless Jim knows the specific recommendations for cycle lengths that are being recommended. But if the cycle length were 140 seconds, and the recommendation was to increase that to 155 or 160-second cycles, those extra 15 to 20-second cycles would get reevaluated as part of the traffic signal timing analysis, and we would take 10 seconds, for example, and move it to El Camino Real for the through movements, and take the other five and move them to, say, the westbound approach of Charleston Road. When the signal is operating and there's a green for the westbound movement, whether that's a through movement or a right turn movement, in this case, that, the movement would extend the green, that extra five seconds on Charleston Road.
Four seconds for one car, is that right? Is that the measurement you use?
Typically, we, it depends on the, the startup, the time. Typically, we give about seven to eight seconds for the first movement and about four seconds for the vehicle thereafter.
Okay. And I guess you do know there's a, a traffic guard at that intersection who has the authority to say, gee, there's a kid in the intersection, I will hold my stop sign up. So the green light is, is going to be a tough sell. And I think the, the cost of it is not going to be, oh, a turn a switch for $2,500, but it's the traffic studies of how do you add five seconds or 10 seconds here and who do you take it away from. So bottom line, I mean, you're asking me to vote an MND on something that has a lot of questions.
Councilmember Ness.
I doubt there's any way you can put this up-
I doubt there's any way you can put this up on the board, but for any of you who have-
Mike.
Is it not on?
No.
For any of you who have the table in front of you, which is Attachment C, zoning compliance table, in my book, it's on 587, but I think that this probably sums up as well as anything can, the kinds of decisions that, that we're making tonight. And I don't think there's any way to toss it up on the board, but for those of you who have access to it, I think it, it certainly is very helpful. Let me start with Measure D and what Measure D might or might not have been. I don't know what exactly it was. I can look at the, at the figures. I'm disappointed to see that 18% of us voted. It's a very small percentage. I cannot remember when only 18% of Palo Altons went to the polls. If any of you can remember something lower than that, let me know. So that means very few people helped make a decision, and the, probably the discussion I heard the most often from those who were on, are working on Measure D was that it was spot zoning. And I think I probably heard that literally as the, the main argument that was, that was put forth. What we're dealing with tonight is zoning, real zoning. This is the zoning that has been in place, and I think our new planning director put it very well to say, this has been there since the 1950s. For those of you who have served on the Planning Commission, I think you're, you're well aware of our zoning plan and, and what it looks like. As far as A-BAG goes, because some of you have mentioned A-BAG, it would be nice if we could decide what our own figures were going to be for A-BAG. That would be great. If you look at Menlo Park and see the fine that they paid for not complying with the A-BAG figures and what's happened to them as a result of that, you will see how they've gotten in the predicament they've gotten in. We can't simply ignore state laws. You know, I, one of the things we've discussed, not this time, but when I was here before, is the traffic on Embarcadero, and couldn't we change the, couldn't, couldn't we change the miles per hour requirement? You cannot. There is a state law that says that. We haven't taken it up this time. I'm sure that sometime while I'm sitting here, we'll take it up again, because we seem to do it every three or four years. The density bonus, again, and I think that our city attorney did an excellent job of explaining why there's a density bonus. We believe in affordable housing. The state believes in affordable housing, and that simply meets, meets that requirement. I think we've kind of beaten traffic to death at this point. I think all the questions were important to be asked, but regardless, the, the one piece of this I didn't quite understand was this is a downtown area, and I wouldn't call this downtown. Maybe some would, but I, I simply was there today, didn't look very downtown to me. So going on to the cumulative impacts, I think that one is also interesting. Councilmember Schmidt brought that up, but once again, I think a good explanation was given in return. How do you, do, how do you actually look at this? Is the cumulative one thing, is it the actual counts the second thing? I, I think it's complicated, it certainly will come up more often. I want to talk about a couple of things that I think are very positive with this project. If there's one thing we heard about when I was running last year, it was Mickey's on Alma. Probably I've heard more about what a terrible example that is of whatever happened there under PC, is to look at Mickey's. Comes right to the sidewalk, goes right straight up. I would have, allow you to take a look at this project where clearly, and I don't know the architect, I confess, but where the architect listened to the community. That's a setback, and it's also a step back, just the kind of thing we have said time after time, we want, set it back, give El Camino some more life, some more vitality. As we watched the video go earlier, you could see, the intent at least, is to have that life and vitality. I hope that will happen. That's an area today where I was, there was not anyone who was walking on the sidewalk. There wasn't really any life there whatsoever. And I think that's one of the areas, certainly the Grand Boulevard has, has headed toward providing. As far as the underdevelopment, I think Councilmember Klein, former Planning Commissioner Klein, did a good job of discussing how well this could be developed, how much more it could be developed. So essentially, as I see it, we're down at least 20%, 25% on, on this project. Going on again to our state mandates, which allow those very few exceptions, Page 587 and the 55-foot height, I think the explanation given tonight was sufficient for me, that this is part of the, the, the state allowance in order to go up that five feet. And I know several of you have asked me about that, so I'm addressing it directly. The only other concessions I can see are on the next page, and they all have to do, again, with state law and with FAR. And the FAR, by the way, goes from, as I see it, 1.0 to 1.06. Am I correct? Somebody help me with the figures? It, it is minuscule, actually. It's, it's a, I think if it's not, I think it's a tenth of a percentage point. And if I'm wrong on that, somebody correct me. So, so coming back to why I'm, why I'm supporting this, I, I think those are sufficient reasons, but I would also say that seeing good design that actually met those types of great concerns we've had with buildings that come right out to the sidewalk. I mentioned Mickey's, I would also mention Charleston and the development on the old Hyatt. Right out to the sidewalk, you've all said, we don't want that anymore. This project doesn't have that. It does do the good, the good setbacks, and it also does the good step-ups. And it's mixed use, something we've talked about wanting to have happen in our city for a long time. If it does pass, I, I hope that it's successful and is an example of what some people might say is a more responsive architecture. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. So thanks to Councilmember Schmidt for asking the traffic questions. I have only one other. Just help me understand why there would be traffic impacts at Erastor, Darrell, and Charleston and El Camino, but not at Page Mill when that's so nearby. Help me understand that.
Well, it's, has to do with several things. The, the type of intersection, the number of phases the intersection has. We're talking about, compared to the intersection volume at Page Mill, which is in the thousands in an hour, we're talking about adding 99 or 80 trips. Not even all of those would go through that intersection. So sometimes a small amount of traffic will have almost exponential impacts on an intersection depending on where it is on its level of service curve. You know, as you approach the capacity of intersection, it becomes unstable in terms of the delay. It could, if you graphed it out, time over delay, you could see this big swoop in the graph that indicates the instability. Small amount of traffic, big increase in delay. In other cases, you could add a lot of traffic and you have a small amount of delay. And so I suspect that's the case with the larger intersections, especially if any of them have free right turns or channelized right turns that can be taken at higher speed than a regular intersection. Things like that have an effect on the capacity of the intersection. So it's hard, there's no one easy answer for that question, that, oh, well, the reason there's no impact here is because of X. It's probably because of X, Y, Z, and a few other reasons as well.
So could I propose that because the intersection is already very congested, that adding some car trips to it don't make enough of an impact?
That's what I, that's what I would-
To have an effect? So the very fact that it's congested keeps this from having an effect, and that would be measured or considered an impact, significant impact by CEQA?
Well, there are standards of significance that we follow. So yes, it's F and, well, the Santa Clara County, everybody's agreed to use the congestion management program significant thresholds. And for that, for this type of intersection, there is an explicit set of criteria that needs to be reached. You need to add four seconds of delay, and then you need to add 1% of, you need to use up 1% of the capacity intersection, and so bigger intersections, smaller projects don't use up that 1%.
So we have F and F'er.
You can go to the LA model, F, 1, 2, 3, 4, up to 12. Not good.
So maybe we ought to look at that. So I have, thank you for that. So I have, well, first, I have some, some things. There are things about this project that I really do like. There are a number of those. I really do like the mix of uses. I like the retention and reuse of the Equinox Building. I think that's very environmentally responsible. I really laud the ample private open space, though I note there were four units that don't have any open, private open space. It went down to two, I read four in here, I thought. Anyway, I'm not quite sure why those poor unfortunates don't have any private open space, but, and I appreciate the upper store, upper story setbacks. I appreciate all of those things. My challenges come back to, with those very good intentions, how it's implemented and how, what seems to be trying to be achieved architecturally, for me, doesn't get there. So we're not here to review the architecture specifically, but just as a comment, I remember ARB members saying a couple of years ago that projects are, that most of the projects they get are good enough. And my problem with the design of this, and I know Fergus Garber's work, and I know it's a very good firm, but what challenged me actually on being able to evaluate the project was, because what we got in our packets and what we could live with for a while were the black and white elevations. So it was very hard, and I see that the ARB and the Planning Commission, they also only got the color renderings at places, and still in what we got at places, we still don't have the full front-on effect of the elevations. And that, that's a challenge for me, because I don't know, you know, exactly what that's going to look like. What I can tell, though, from these elevations on the plan sheet, A02 and A03, is that, for me, I have findings issues. We've talked about what kind of, what kind of latitude and discretion we have. That's one thing. I don't disagree with things that have been said about discretion, but we have to be able to make findings. And I made a list of several findings that I can't make. ARB findings, Section 5, Numbers 1, Numbers 2, 5, and 6, all have to do with transition and compatibility in mass scale, height, and density with existing development. And Number 16, A and E, I can't make those. The mitigated negative deck related to those findings, the mitigated negative deck, I, if I can read my own reading, writing here, I think it's, it's either A and E or D and E. Hang on there a second, and I can, D and E. Substantially adversely affect the type or intensity of existing or planned uses in the area, less insignificant, or be compatible with adjacent land uses or with the general character of the surrounding area, including density and building height. And if you just look at, you know, this development, it's pretty stunning. It's a block long. It is a block long. It's going to have an enormous effect, an impact on that, on that area. Now, for those that would say, well, it's consistent with zoning, and so we can suppose that all these other land uses or all these other properties are going to get, get redeveloped. Well, when? It may be decades. You know, we don't have control over that. So I think this needs to be more compatible and more, articulate isn't quite the right word, but more, more compatible in terms of transition. I have a couple of questions for staff, which is, when you have, in single-family homes, and there's another application to that, too, above a certain height is counted twice in FAR. If you have double-height retail and office in commercial zones, are those counted twice towards FAR or just once?
Those are counted just once.
So the fact that we have double-high, double-story, two-story office and retail, we've added to the mass, but it doesn't count towards the FAR, correct?
Correct, correct. That's only in single-family neighborhoods where we have that, that double counting.
Yeah, I knew it was there, and I couldn't remember for sure if it was here or not. Russ?
The big difference is that in, in single-family development, we use the FAR limitation to control the bulk and mass of the structure, whereas for commercial development, the FAR limitation is intended to limit the intensity of use. It's not intended to control the bulk and mass in development. That's, you know, the Architectural Review Board's job, so there's quite a difference.
Well, we may have differing opinions on, on how it's being exercised, okay? The, also the DEE, I just have one question about the DEE. If these lofts were not poking through the roof, would those lofts, or would the unit sizes be any different in terms of square footage? I've not quite gotten clear on that.
Can we ask the architect to answer that question?
Sure, sure.
Yes, if the lofts were not allowed to pop up behind the height of the roof screen, the units would be smaller. As you probably noticed in the plans, a lot of these are very small units, and to have the lofts on the fourth floor makes them more usable. I actually have a diagram that I can bring up on the screen if that would help.
I think I've got the answer to my question, though. So, so my purpose for asking the question is, so design enhancement is section, section in, or definition in the code, Section 1876050 for design enhancement exceptions, it says, "No design enhancement exception shall be granted under this section that would increase floor area."
I should clarify, the area is not added because of the height increase. It's utilized in that location. It's area that's already allowed as part of the project. It's not extra area because of the height.
I'm not quite sure I'm clear on that.
It's, it's not, we're not, we're not saying that because we have five feet, we now add more area. We're saying we have area, and because of the five feet, we're actually able to not make the project closer to El Camino or wider in other places. The area is there already, it's, it's just being utilized in an area that, the roof screen would be there already, and so we're able to make the building mass smaller by tucking the areas behind it.
If I can interject, it goes back to the FAR bonus that is the concession under the state requirements. So that state-mandated concession allows a certain amount of square footage or FAR on the site. The design that's been proposed pushes some of that up to the level of this roof screening. If it didn't go there, it would go somewhere else.
Well, I'm just saying, okay, I, I can understand that, but I'm just saying, I'm not seeing that this is an appropriate use of a DEE. And I just don't know how you can make the finding to it. What's exceptional about this, this site that's not the same situation you would have on another site? So, so, you know, I just, I worry about the precedence that we set sometimes. I've been troubled for a good while about how we've been using DEEs. I'm sorry, Heather. So not to pick on this project, it's just one that's come to us and we haven't had one for a good while, so I don't think it's an appropriate use of, of a DEE. The other place where I think the, the project could be improved considerably is, I look at the, both on the black and whites that we have in the packet that we got, and then in the color renditions that we have now, there are some of the street-facing elements on El Camino in particular that I just, I don't see them as being pedestrian scale. I see them as being off-putting. And if you, if you see, well, I mean, you just look at like these, these openings are like, look like about three and a half times the height of, of a person. And so I'm looking at the corner of, what is that? El Camino and, must be Portage.
Portage, sure.
El Camino and Portage. And I know there are things that can be done to improve that. And then the access to the courtyard, I appreciate there's an opening that goes back in and provides that better circulation, but it doesn't seem very appealing or inviting to me, even with the, with the fly-through, all that helped. I don't see this as something that would invite people back. Again, that's a, a design thing. Again, that's a design thing. Couple of questions for staff, too. What's the status of the California Avenue Concept Plan? And what's the status of our traffic model?
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. The California Avenue Concept Plan is going to the Planning Commission for review on Wednesday. They've reviewed it once, this is another time they're going to be reviewing it. And then, if they do decide to move it on, it'll be to council sometime in early 2014.
And the traffic model? I thought it was complete.
The staff is working with the consultants on the model. I haven't seen any finished work product. Our plan is to go to the Planning Commission with an overview of the traffic analysis methodology that we use for cumulative impacts, some of the questions that were raised here today. And as part of that overview, which is coming up at one of the upcoming meetings in December, we'll be giving them a status report on the model itself. But I think it's, you know, in development.
Okay. And then, maybe the last question, let me check my notes here. Just for what it's worth, one other thing that I found a challenge about this project is, again, I said it was like it's a block-long project, and the roof line at the top of the fourth floor, and it looks like at the screen as well, there's one long, continuous line on the El Camino side, which is going to make this building appear, from my perspective, it's going to make it appear as one big mass, even though it does have some articulation at the ground floor. El Camino is a wide street, so you're going to be also seeing it from across the street. So, that's an effect that I think it's going to have. And the other thing is about FARs, and I've had this discussion with some of you, is FAR isn't up to, so an entitlement doesn't mean you're entitled to, let's just say, 10,000 square feet. So, if a good project could be delivered, or the best project can be delivered at 9,500 square feet, then that's the project that we should be designing. But we're always maxing out the floor area ratio. And the reason I bring that up is, not only for obvious reasons, but also because that affects how much our concessions are going to be delivering on-site for projects. So, I'd asked that question of staff earlier, we didn't get really clarification on that. So, that's an ongoing question I have and would appreciate staff clarification at some point in the future. I have one amendment to offer, and it's based on the comments by the traffic consultant. We don't have, oh, actually, there was a misunderstanding, or I didn't state it well. My question about the mitigation measure and who was going to be implementing that, I don't remember exactly how I did ask it, but the measure itself says, "The applicant shall conduct an evaluation implementation of signal cycle length optimization and reallocation." So, my question was, it seems like the applicant is solely going to be in charge of doing the analysis, and that was my concern about the wording of this. Is this standard wording, and I shouldn't worry about it? Or is this, could this wording, or should it be improved? That was the purpose of my question. And sorry if I didn't ask it well earlier.
Yeah, just to respond, I think it's clear that we would, city staff would be reviewing what they prepare in terms of an analysis, so we could certainly add that to the language of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, but I think we understand what it means.
Okay. So, then, the suggestion, I guess, of the consultant was that we put in place a bond, or have the applicant put in place a bond, or that we impose a miscellaneous traffic signal improvements fund that the applicant would pay now as opposed to later, because it's hard to collect later. That was what I understood from the consultant.
I think that's what he said, as an option going forward. I just, I have the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan in front of me, and item 13 is this mitigation measure T1. It does say, "The property owner slash developer will submit the evaluation for review of City of Palo Alto Transportation Department and Caltrans."
I'm looking at mitigation measure T1 on, as a part of the MND, on page 786, 786, maybe I should be looking someplace else.
And the reporting program indicates who's responsible for it, but also who monitors it. So, in this case, we did make it clear that the city was going to review the study prepared by the applicant. I think--
Is there any concern about funding it? Or should we incorporate something, some means to make sure that funding is in place?
Maybe I can comment a little bit on the whole concept of signal timing as a mitigation measure is a little difficult. I have not typically seen signal timing changes incorporated as mitigation, because optimizing signal timing is one of the things that transportation agencies do. Caltrans does it to their intersections when it's needed. Cities and counties do it to their intersections when called for, and quite often, it's basically inherent in the analysis that's prepared for projects. You optimize the intersection to see what the cumulative volumes will do under those good or best conditions. In this case, I think it's, we've been very conservative. We've identified the signal timing adjustments that have to happen in the future as a mitigation measure. The applicant is going to be on the hook to prepare the study and pay for the study. We can try and think of some way to collect the, what our staff indicates is a nominal fee, you know, $2,500, $3,500 for those future adjustments, and put it towards signal optimization if that's the council's desire.
And what would you say would be the best way to do that? If we were going to add an amendment to this, just to make sure that we collect that, would you have any language for how we might do that?
I think we'd need a few minutes to work out something like that.
Okay. I have to say, just as a quick aside here, it's quite refreshing and no discount to anybody else, but it's really refreshing to hear you be able to speak so eloquently about traffic mitigations and signalization in your sequin knowledge. It's really, I'm very happy and pleased to have you on board.
Thank you.
So, I will not be supporting the project because of not being able to make the various findings that I mentioned earlier. If there were other councilmembers that are interested, I'd be amenable to sending this back to the ARB.
Councilmember Bremen.
So, a member of the public who's no longer here mentioned that they were under the belief that guest parking was not mentioned in the state density bonus law. And I just wanted to confirm with our legal counsel that that is, in fact, the case, it is included in the state density bonus law. Let me rephrase, because there's a rhetorical question that's unnecessary. So, I didn't understand that at first either, when I was looking at the state density bonus law. And then, I looked at it again, and I saw that in the text before the table, where it discusses the types of residential units and how much parking is required. It says, "The below parking is required inclusive of guest parking," and I believe it says, "disability parking." Is that correct?
You probably just looked at it, so I will take your word for it.
Well, earlier today, I don't have it in front of me, but I did, yes, earlier today. And so, I think, I didn't realize that when, in previous discussions, we've had in previous meetings in different committees, I think that's kind of absurd, and that frustrates me. And I want to add that parking back in. So, I want to add in those 16 units of guest parking. How do I do that? I think the answer you're getting to is I can't. Is that where we're getting at?
That's correct. You cannot add--
Okay. And that frustrates me, too. I know that frustrates members of the public. It frustrates me as well, and I'll give a phone call to our local state assemblyman to ask as to what the reasoning was. But that's a huge impact, where we see on a, I support affordable housing, I think it's important to incentivize it, but when we see a residential or a mixed-use project that's adding five units of below-market-rate housing, and the amount of lowered parking that a developer can get without the city council having any ability to change that, you know, I wish I'd realized that in previous conversations we've had over the past six months about whether or not we should do projects under PCs where we have some discretion, or whether we should do it at current zoning where we don't have discretion. And this is a great example of, you know, that impact and our inability to change that. And so, I'm as frustrated as anybody at the fact that because of the state density bonus law, the residential parking will be parked at 61% of what we would have it parked under Palo Alto zoning ordinances, and we have no ability to change that, because that's the state law, and it supersedes our law. The additional five feet in height, a couple of thoughts. First, thank you, guys, for giving us this here. I wish the public would have seen it earlier, and I wish we could have seen it earlier, because it's a lot easier to really understand what the project would look like and the impact it would have, and the effect it would have from El Camino than the black and whites. I think Karen mentioned that before, and I totally agree. Along those lines, what I would like in every future project is, I was thinking of CSI, and how, you know, when somebody gets shot from very far away, they do this cool stuff with beams, where you can kind of get a, they look at the angle of the bullet in the body, and then send a beam out. Let's say they were shot by a sniper. And they can kind of get a sense, "Oh, the sniper was, you know, three blocks away in this building in this room." I would like something like that for the increased height, so that we can get a sense for where one would have to be standing to actually see that increased height. Because from one of the images on the front, I don't know, TO.O., I think is the sheet number, you know, from the acacia corner, on the bottom-left corner image, it doesn't look like you can see, you're going to see that five-foot rise from, you'll see it from the office buildings, you know, maybe at Palo Alto Square, but I don't know where you're going to see that from. And I think that would have been really helpful to get an understanding, so that we could really know the impact that it is going to have on residents, that this increased five feet would make. And so, along those lines, and I was, for the past hour and a half, I've been convincing myself not to say this, and I'm going to say it anyhow, it would be a lot more politically expedient to turn that down and just say, you know, you can't have the extra five feet, because a lot of folks in the neighborhoods have been yelling at us about that, and, you know, that seems to be, you know, that would be the popular move. I think that would make the project worse for everybody. And the reason I think it would do that is because the developer still has the ability to add that 3,000 square feet somewhere else. And as has been alluded to here today, that would either be a wider building, or that would be closer to the street. And as Councilwoman Niss, Councilmember Niss, was talking about earlier, you know, not only did I go spend an hour and a half here, but I also went to Mickey's Market twice before going here and after going here, and I stopped by the 801 Alma Building and all of these buildings that are really bad. While I was marking off the setbacks and looking at it, I also took a minute to bash my head against the walls, because they're frustrating. This isn't those. And I really think, you know, from what you can kind of sense from these images, you know, the building that's going to be closest to the street and have that kind of biggest impact on the street is already there. It's the Equinox Extension, and that's already there, and they're not changing it. Another question I had was, do we know how tall the We Fix Max building is? Do we have any, I was trying to ballpark it. I asked some guys on the street what they thought, but they were all over the place. They didn't have an answer. It's not 50, I know that. I think it's like 35, though, maybe, or--
I apologize, I don't have the exact answer, but I think it is around 35 feet.
Okay, thank you. And that's a huge block, a really ugly block, that's right on the street right now. And you've got the Equinox Extension that's right on the street right now, and then you've got parking lots, which aren't exactly soft on the eyes. And so, you know, I think, I think this is an improvement over what we have there now, especially given the rights of the developer to build something there. I know it's getting late, so I had a lot more questions that I won't ask. But maybe, one bugaboo that I've got is, the trees on the sidewalk in the images, now we're getting into the minutia, how are those, what are those trees going to look like? Are they going to have little planter boxes around the base of the tree, but then the rest of the area between the trees will be sidewalk? Or will it be this funny, how did I term it, useless mulch and shrubs that we have in some other places that I don't think really add much?
Well, as you know, the trees on El Camino and this tree on Portage are existing. And the city arborist has asked us to increase its exposure to the sky. Right now, there's a great deal of sidewalk and concrete adjacent to it. So, we won't be having the existing tree grates, we'll be opening that up a little bit. There is a more hardy ground cover that's proposed by the landscape architect, and that should be resistant to people walking across it, but also won't scratch cars or car doors or people as they walk by. It's tough to find a good landscape material that is hardy to withstand El Camino, but that's the intent.
Great, and I think that'd be helpful. You know, having some material there that people can walk on, that's usable, I think makes the sidewalk feel wider than when it's something, when it's shrubs or something like that, that people feel like they can't walk on, and then you really just feel like you've got eight feet there instead of the actual 12 feet. So, to the extent you can do that, just from the other buildings that I looked at today, I think that'd be helpful. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Shepherd?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. And first off, it's the height. You've introduced this as 55 feet, the, you know, filling in this as part of the square footage so that we can get it pulled away from the street, which I think is a good improvement. But even if we denied that use at the 55-foot, you said that we would still have a project coming back to us with a change to go out to the street and still have a 55-foot-high building. So, can you explain, and while you're explaining that, I also understood that you can use 15 feet for your mechanical building, but we're not being asked to give them the 15 feet here. But if they used it, would we have discretion over saying, "We don't want you to use it"? And so, we only want you to go up to 50-foot high?
Vice Mayor Shepherd, as I understand it, the project is entitled to that 15 feet of mechanical stuff on the roof, and we would require them to screen it. In this instance--
15 above the 50, so 65.
That's right, 65.
Okay.
In this instance, they're not proposing 15 feet, they're proposing five feet. And they've asked that, in addition to having the mechanical and screening, they have this occupy, this building's square footage in there as well.
Okay. And so, thank you, because I want to be clear about this, that we do get this incremental height above the 50-foot limit. And I actually think that this project has been designed with, you know, with this team listening to the angst in this community about the sensitivity to height. And so, I want to thank you for that, actually, to try to take this into consideration for us, and yet still, we're being bullied into saying, "Take that five feet away." But in fact, we can't take the five, we can give them another 10 feet, even, but then they would have to travel the usable square footage someplace else, and it would pop out over by the sidewalk, is the way I understand that. So, my other question is, first off, I noticed that there was a rigorous conversation in the minutes with the Plan and Transportation Commission, and it revolved around this concept that the BMR units are only BMR units for a period of 30 years, and then they go to market. And I know that that comes from the density bonus law, but how, and I think the only way that I know as a councilmember that we could secure it in perpetuity or forever to keep that would be to do a planned community zoning or something. Are there other angles that we can do? But we cannot impose that on them at this point, because they're-- But we cannot impose that on them at this point because they're not asking for anything else as an exchange in order for us to be able to capture that. Can you explain how it is that this will go to market in 30 years and there's, if we have any leverage in that at all tonight?
Vice Mayor Shepard, this is not an area of my particular expertise, but I understand it exactly as you do. The 30 years comes out of the density bonus law. If we were going to go longer than that, we would have to do some kind of development agreement, the PC zoning tool you mentioned, or the city would actually have to put money in the units, you know, put funding towards the units and in exchange for that funding impose some kind of requirement. So none of those three things are proposed here and so we're stuck with the 30 years from state law.
Okay, because I think that there is a concern. I honestly am still trying to get my takeaways from the Measure D as well because some of them are using assumptions that I've had to use different assumptions when I'm considering projects, but I'm just trying to illustrate this so that we can start to get a common understanding of how this development happens in the city. So this has been zoned since the 1950s for this type of a use. And yet in 2004, when the density bonus law came into effect, there is a bit of supersizing that happens with that if the developer chooses to put below-market rents in. Or they could give us the money and then we could put it in a housing fund and then it becomes specifically used for a project, you know, that the, that one of the below-market rent agencies would want to use it for. And we've used it for Stevenson's House, you know, that's already existing. So I just wanted to get that cleared up. Now, the VTA traffic model. And that's been the conversation tonight. And I think it's one of the reasons why one of my colleagues is not supporting this tonight. Do we really have discretion in choosing a different traffic model? I understand the difference between a cumulative and, let's see, the other term that you used, the project-based and then projected. But are we allowed to go and shift and take a different traffic study or traffic analysis? Because there's multiple ones. And I think I was first introduced to that when we were looking at the Stanford Development Agreement and I noticed that Menlo Park had a different way of analyzing how their intersections were going to be impacted from the increased trips from that project based on how we were analyzing it. And it's because San Mateo County has a different traffic study model that they use to slice through all of their projects. But, so can we go and use another traffic model on this or we are tied to this VTA Santa Clara County one? I think the answer is we're tied to it, but...
Well, I would just say, you know, our obligation is to use the best available tool. We're in Santa Clara and up till this point, you know, when this project was analyzed, particularly the VTA model was the best available tool. As we discussed earlier, the city is preparing its own model, which will still have to be compatible with the VTA model. But we're going to try and refine, refine it. But that isn't complete and wasn't available when this project was analyzed.
Okay. And yet at the same time, I'm learning that the traffic is over-measured, that actually we're not expecting the trips. That's one of the answers that I did hear from Councilmember Schmidt when he was asking. And then also, we've got parking, it's underparked. I agree with, oh, Mark's not here. Councilmember Berman, former councilmember Berman, this does bother me. I think that this is something that we need to play catch-up on. As a matter of fact, I think that we need to park our projects. But I also don't find that I can deny the project because we are following the rules about the way it is being parked. And yet, one of the arguments has been that since it's mixed use, that people will be leaving during the day and there'll be some fluidness to this project, which makes it a little complimentary to the angst that we might have about it being legally underparked, but, I mean, underparked for us, but technically not underparked in order for approval. Is that, and that's what I'm hearing from the applicant, that they think that this will, will not overflow likely because of the fact that people will be gone during the day and workers will be coming in, that kind of thing. So I've kind of sorted that through myself and being able to say, okay, that makes sense. I hope it materializes that way. So finally, I'm just, I am going to be supporting this for, you know, we have had people counting our votes for other things. So I guess there's a lot of reasons why people won't reelect me if I run next year. But I am, but I do also want to abide by the laws of the land and I want to protect property rights. And these are the property rights that are in our comprehensive plan. We've been asked to follow them. We are following them. We are having a few exceptions, which don't seem to be egregious to me, although I find two colleagues where they are egregious and there might be others tonight. I think it would be a bad thing to send this back and have it come through without any kind of enhancements like we have here where we are actually getting an experience of pulling it away from the sidewalk. I think that that is a good thing. I too find Mickey's on Alma to be just a mess. It's an awful project. I don't know of anybody on this council dais right here that likes that project. I do remember a moratorium that got put in place right when that project was starting to emerge. I think moratoriums are great because it gives everybody confidence for a very narrow period of time. And then all in a sudden, the moratoriums go away and people have to recapture their value from having sat on a project and paid a bank loan for a project while they can't develop it and get it actually out into transition and into the cash flow that they need in order to support a built-out project. So I think that that did influence the outcome of the Mickey's project. And I don't want to have that experience again. I don't like seeing row housing. I think that that was very clear when I was campaigning in 2009. And I think it has not left me as some of the considerations that I have to take into account for tonight and on other projects. So for these reasons and many other, I do think that these features of reducing the setback allow me to have better confidence that we have a better project here than we would if we sent this back for more work. And I think that that would end up with a project that wouldn't be as appealing to the community right now. And certainly, we would miss some of the elements that council, I know, has spoken specifically about in the past. Thank you.
Councilmember Burke?
Okay. First, I'll say that I started from the standpoint of this project looks too big to me. And there were a number of different areas that I had real concerns about. One was at the get-go. I felt it was going to be tough to convince me to allow any deviation from the building height requirement. But upon the analysis of what's going on and that they are not, that additional building height is not increasing the FAR and it's not degrading the design, it's perhaps enhancing the design. I have a hard time clinging to that opposition, even though I think that we should be maintaining our 50-foot height limit. I also had concerns over the parking, including this, what do we call it, puzzle board? Yeah. The video helped. I was kind of skeptical as to how well it would work and also hearing how widely it's used and that it is used effectively. I know that some of the other stacked, simpler stacked parking, there are places where it's not being used properly. And then the constraints we're under on the basis of the state housing bonus law. I also think that there are some good things about this project, given our existing zoning. And I should start, take a step back and say, it's kind of ironic because a lot of the speakers tonight are, were folks who were opponents to the Measure D and the primary, or one of the main refrains was just follow the zoning rules. And if I were to characterize the arguments tonight, it's just don't follow the zoning rules. And that shows the reality. When people actually look objectively, in the end, I think a deeper analysis will show a different story on both of these things. I also want to, so I think that given our existing zoning rules for CS zones, this is one of the best design projects that I've seen. I still don't like how big it is, but that's the fault of the zoning rules, not the fault of the design. And it also contains, what, 48 small apartments for rent? And that follows one of the initiatives that I and others pushed through as we were doing our housing element update, which is the way to have the least impact on the community while complying with the state housing mandates is more smaller units. And that's what we've done here. And that's a thing that was designed to reduce the pressure on residential neighborhoods and on schools. And that's being done here. I do share with councilmembers Schmidt and Holman and probably others, real concerns over the cumulative traffic impacts. And I am real hesitant to go forward with any other projects until we have that traffic analysis for this area. I just think that we can't continue to do this. This project went through proper procedures, but I've got a real problem with it. Having said that, I do want to clarify for the record a couple of claims that councilmember Schmidt made that were just false. He stated that these four different projects, that the VMware and Stanford Hospital, they said were within a mile. They're both over two miles away. The two others, the 195 Page Mill and the VTA lot on El Camino and Page Mill have approved traffic impact studies. Neither of them do. So I may concur with you over the overall concern on it, but we can't make up facts. So I'm going to really look forward to our upcoming meeting on December 2nd to include within it an area that I was interested in addressing, which is changes to our CS zoning. And this gets to the heart of the issue of those of us who are concerned that this size of a project is not what we can handle up and down El Camino. We have to tweak that zoning. And so we'll be able to have a deeper, meaningful, proper discussion around that. And that's the way we should have the discussion. And that's the first step in that process can be included on December 2nd. And so I encourage people to think about that and begin to look at how we might adjust some of those requirements in a meaningful, long-term way.
It's getting late, so I'll keep my comments briefly. I think councilmembers all made really good comments tonight. The only thing we didn't talk a little bit about was the setback requirement. We did a colleague's memo. I think most people up here would like to see us not having a municipal code that basically mandates that we build to the line. And so I think, I don't know where that is, but I would like to see it come back as soon as possible. A change to the municipal code, not mandating a build to the line. And I don't know where we are on that, but I do think we need to take care of that as soon as possible. With that, let's vote on the board. That passes on a, he's coming, all right. Greg, how are you voting? So I can just call it. And that passes on an eight to two vote. No, seven to two vote. A seven to two vote with councilmembers Schmidt and Holman voting no. All right. All right. So moving on to the next one. If we could, we're running a little low on time, so if staff could do a short presentation on this. Do you need a five-minute break? We're running out of time. You want a five-minute break? All right, five-minute break.
On item seventeen, there is reference to, corrected reference, to a potential of these funds going to the Palo Alto History Museum at the Roth Building. While I've not been employed by the History Museum for almost a year and a half, I do still volunteer for the museum, so it has been recommended that I recuse myself in all effort to eliminate any thoughts of impartiality.
Do we have any speakers on this? Yes.
Yeah. Who said that? You do, right?
All right. Staff presentation?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. The, we are returning to you tonight as directed by, as directed at the last hearing, to request direction on whether to apply the Edgewood Plaza public benefit penalty to one of three potential projects: the future rehabilitation of a historic public building, construction of a sidewalk along West Bay Shore Road, or another council-directed priority. To provide context and background, the penalty was one of five public benefits that were given by the applicant for the Edgewood Plaza mixed-use project in exchange for being granted a PC amendment. Those included the preservation of a historic shopping center, as well as a sign, provision of a grocery store, vehicle charging stations, and a public park. The first potential project is historic preservation, basically contributing the ninety-four thousand dollars to a publicly, to a fund to rehabilitate a publicly-owned historic building. Potential projects can include the University Avenue Transit Depot, the Lucy Stern Community Center, or the Roth Building. Additionally, if the city does purchase the post office, that would also be a potential project. All of those potential projects, or one of those potential projects, would return to the City Council for final authorization prior to, once the building is chosen. Staff has also put at places this evening a clarification memo that corrects a staff report that the Roth Building is intended to be home of the Palo Alto History Museum, not the Palo Alto Art League. The second potential project is the contribution to fund the construction of a sidewalk on the west side of West Bay Shore Road from the north side of Channing Avenue to City of Palo Alto and East Palo Alto border for a distance of about sixteen hundred feet. The need for the sidewalk in this area is recognized by the city's bike and pedestrian transportation plan. The third option would be to be determined council-directed priority. The sidewalk project, as shown in this slide, would be for new sidewalk on the west side of West Bay Shore Road opposite of the freeway from San Francisco Creek to Channing Avenue. This next slide actually shows the existing conditions. The condition is not pedestrian-friendly, with a sound wall on one side and an unpaved area on the other. Drivers do tend to drive fairly quickly and travel at a high speed on this road. Sorry. Here are the remaining pictures, just showing the context. The sidewalk project, which is an opportunity for West Bay Shore Road, would cost approximately sixty-two thousand dollars for the design phase, include survey for drainage, traffic analysis, and also implementing formalized parking restrictions. The construction phase would be about four-hundred-eleven thousand dollars and would take up to about three months, ten months, sorry, ten months. And the project would take, would be constructed as part of the capital improvement program. In addition, as directed by the Planning and Transportation Commission, staff did send out a postal survey to Edgewood Drive residents whose properties back onto the area where the sidewalk would be constructed. Staff has received six out of nineteen responses, three saying yes, provided that all impacts are mitigated, three noes, basically voicing that the proposed sidewalk would not contribute enough benefits. Generally, there are concerns about the safety and speed of vehicles, as well as safety to potential pedestrians. City has also received a East Palo Alto-led petition with Palo Alto and East Palo Alto residents requesting the sidewalk bicycle lane treatments and addressing the bicycle lane concerns. And another correspondence was received requesting that in addition to the sidewalk, that improvements for bicycle riders and parking be considered in tandem with sidewalk construction. Staff has also received an email from a resident who's an active member of the local neighborhood and this project, who requests that money be spent on historic rehabilitation because of the historic impact. City has also just received another written letter from, from the East Palo Alto residents, also citing that, also expressing support for the sidewalk, given the dangerous conditions of East, West Bay Shore Road. So staff is requesting council direction on whether to apply the funding towards the construction of the West Bay Shore sidewalk as part of the CIP funding, direct staff to apply funding towards a rehab of a historic public building subject to council approval, or another council-directed priority. This concludes staff's report.
All right. We have a few public speakers, Trish Mulvey, to be followed by Brenda Irwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm the public correspondent asking consideration of a multiple benefit improvement that would include bicycle, pedestrian, and parking options. I would feel terrible if we had a project going forward that took away the twenty parking spaces that are currently in use, that, as we know, is not an area that's affecting people's driveways like the situation next to the Noah Bridge. And as I've said when we talked about the Crescent Park situation, those people don't have any other place to go, and for us to even be contemplating something that would take parking spaces away is really troubling. I also want to clarify that the letters and petitions that you've gotten are from East Palo Alto residents. The way it has been expressed in the staff report makes it sound like they're from the city of East Palo Alto. I have been in touch with East Palo Alto staff, and they, this has not been discussed with them. I feel badly about that. So having said that, I would love it if we could figure out a way to do combined bike and pedestrian on an asphalt surface that could be used during the day. Very much appreciate the community concerns about speed on West Bay Shore Freinage Road to look at traffic calming opportunities there. And then just make it no parking, say, from eight in the morning until seven at night, and then allow the, an asphalt surface instead of a professional sidewalk to be able to be used as parking overnight, I think would be of benefit. As you notice when the map is up, the area, there's a curve in the road, and so I'm only talking about parking in the straight section closest to the creek before you get to the bend. Once you are rounding that curve, there wouldn't be visibility coming from the creek towards Channing. So just wanted to say that. In terms of if you choose to go with use of the money towards a historic preservation resource, that was the harm that caused the fee to be assessed, so it certainly makes sense to do that. I'd like you to consider a project that could actually get done, instead of going into a pool of money for something bigger later, the one, one or the other of the two at Lucy Stern, which happens to be the site closest to the impacted area, both of which could get done with that kind of money. So I hope you'd give consideration of that as well. Thanks.
Brenda Irwin, to be followed by Diane Skimera. All right. Maybe they left. Diane Skimera. Frances Alexis. And Horst Haussecker.
Good evening, council members. I'm one of the neighbors who actually do live on Edgewood Drive, directly adjacent to West Bay Shore, and we are severely impacted by the traffic on West Bay Shore. And I'd like to give you a feeling for what it's like living there. Traffic has significantly increased since the apartment complex on, just across the other bridge in East Palo Alto was completed, and cars consistently drive well above the speed limit. Motorcycles use West Bay Shore as a racetrack. All of that traffic noise gets reflected and bouncing off the, the sound wall along freeway one-on-one and directed directly towards our house, which makes sleeping very hard, to say the least. I'd also like you to consider that as part of this project, you may have to remove some of the trees, which some of the neighbors depend upon as a sound protection. And the, and right now, it is actually, it's reached a point where traffic noise from West Bay Shore exceeds the traffic noise from the freeway itself, which is quite astonishing. Another thing is that the East Palo Alto residents who decided to park along West Bay Shore overnight cause a lot of noise on top of that. Cars get moved late at night, doors get slammed, people shout and yell in loud voices, we hear fighting, trash gets tossed over our fences routinely. And senior neighbor who lives next door asked me to tell you that she actually does no longer feel safe living there, which is actually sad and something that should worry you. The same cars that are parked along this freeway actually do block access to some of the people who have gates in the back of our property and rely on that access from West Bay Shore, which is another constant, you know, source of nuisance. Now, safety does not get addressed by building a sidewalk. It only encourages people to drive even faster than before, now that people are out of the way. We need a much lower, significantly lower, and strictly enforced speed limit along West Bay Shore to take care of the traffic noise. We need no parking at any time, and we need continued access to our, to our property where we need it. It's also interesting to see that, if you look at the petitions in front of you that were brought upon you, that they were almost exclusively signed by people who don't even live close to that place. They don't know what it's like living there, all except for four people who all seem to live in the worst same house along Edgewood Drive. And interestingly enough, two of the same people also signed the petition as residents of nineteen eighty-two West Bay Shore Road in East Palo Alto. Something for you to consider. So I'd like to urge the City Council not to approve a project that does not take into consideration some of the concerns that Palo Alto residents have about lower quality of life based on these issues that I talked about before, and to seriously consider to adding to any potential project, you know, a significantly reduced speed limit, taking care of the traffic noise, no parking, and access to our properties. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now your turn to council for questions, comments, motions, et cetera. Maybe we could start off with a motion from some council member? Councilmember Schmidt.
I move that council directs staff to apply the penalty pay for the Edgewood Plaza for the historic preservation of a public building.
Second.
Great. The historic preservation of which public building?
I think all we are doing is saying the category.
Yeah. We didn't say which building. It says a public building.
So a public building?
Yeah.
Okay. Fair enough. Got it.
Go sit here.
Okay. So that's, you want to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, I think it is important that we do something about the roadway and the sidewalk on East Palo Alto, but that's really a sidewalk infrastructure issue and should be put on our infrastructure agenda. For the amount of money we have, I think the historical preservation of a building as close to the site as possible makes a lot of sense, something that can be done and accomplished with the amount of money we have.
Councilmember Ness, would you like to speak?
And I agree with Councilmember Schmidt, and the potential projects are listed as the Transit Depot, Lucy Stern, so forth. And so this isn't a great deal of money. This isn't even a hundred thousand. But I think that, given that this was mitigation for a historic demolition, that this should be given to historic preservation.
Councilmember Burt.
I have a question for staff. If we went in the direction of the sidewalk project along West Bay Shore, this would not fully fund that. What's your, what do you envision as how that process would continue?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. I think that there's just a couple of things. Obviously, we would, I mean, this would, I want to just call it seed funding towards the project, but you can see there's, we would have to close the gap with CIP funding. I think Trish's point about conversation directly with the East Palo Alto staff is something that is a follow-up that we ought to do also, not only about what the potential design was, but whether or not there's any potential contribution at all that they might want to assist us with. And then I think we would just have to, again, be sure that we were cobbling it together and putting something together in the CIP. You know, I think one of the advantages to doing this is, if you're interested, is it does sort of signal that you're interested in seeing that something happened in this project, and it makes it easier for us when we bring the CIP forward.
Well, I'll just say that reckoning back to when we went through the approval on the Edgewood Plaza project, we recognize that there were a lot of problems with the way this project had historically been laid out. We addressed some of them in terms of the ingress and egress improvements and, and the turning conflicts on to barkadero. But this pedestrian element is, is an important part of this, and I want to see Edgewood Plaza be complete and become a better amenity, and I think this would be an additional step to it. So I will offer a substitute motion that the, to apply the penalty toward the design of a sidewalk project along West Bay Shore.
I'll say.
Okay. That was seconded by Councilmember Shepherd. Vice Mayor Shepherd.
So I think I've really spoken to my principal reasons for doing so. I think it's, it's money well spent and, and funds that would be directed to the project that, where the funds come from.
Vice Mayor Shepherd, you wish to speak to your second?
Yeah. I, I've, I've found this to be sort of the cart before the horse. You know, assessing a fee, fine, I'm glad that we didn't take up how we were going to handle that fine when we were going through the, the FEI, the, the expansion to the, to the EIR in order to try to capture the incident that happened out there. I do understand the connectivity it has to a historic building, and yet at the same time, this really doesn't do much for any of the historic buildings the city owns. And I actually wouldn't mind seeing policy and services take up a conversation about that, whether or not we should do that going forward when we have to take out a public building, a historic building. And this will actually start the seed money for, obviously, not building out a sidewalk, because that would take a lot of money, but it would do exactly what Councilmember Burt is saying. It would, it would finish off this design, and then we could figure out how the neighborhoods felt about it and not, and we would have that type of civic engagement. And I think that that would be an important thing to pursue, and then finish out that design and actually have a possible project. So until we have a more developed historic preservation fund, I would rather see this actually in operation out in the community right now, making this a better project.
Councilmember Price.
Thank you. I will be supporting the substitute motion for all the, and I concur with all the comments made by my colleagues. It seems like this is a project directly adjacent to the subject property. It makes a lot of sense. I look forward to a future conversation about the importance of a historic rehabilitation or restoration fund and how that could be utilized.
Councilmember Klein.
Well, I've gone, this is a close question for me, and actually, I have a different view than any of the expressed so far. I have trouble with the original motion, because it just is, leaves to another day what that public building should be. And I think that for the amount of money we have at stake here that we owe I move that council direct staff to apply the penalty pay for the Edgewood Plaza for the historic preservation of a public building.
Second.
Great. The historic preservation of which public building?
I think all we are doing is saying the category.
Yeah, we didn't say which building. It says a public building.
So a public building?
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Got it.
So sit here.
Okay, so that's, you want to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, I think it is important that we do something about the roadway and the sidewalk on East Palo Alto, but that's really a sidewalk infrastructure issue and should be put on our infrastructure agenda. For the amount of money we have, I think the historical preservation of a building as close to the site as possible makes a lot of sense, something that can be done and accomplished with the amount of money we have.
Councilmember Ness, would you like to speak?
And I agree with councilmember Schmidt, and the potential projects are listed as the Transit Depot, Lucy Stern, so forth. And so this isn't a great deal of money. This isn't even $100,000. But I think that, given that this was mitigation for historic demolition, that this should be given to historic preservation.
Councilmember Burt.
I have a question for staff. If we went in the direction of the sidewalk project along West Bay Shore, this would not fully fund that. What's your, what do you envision as how that process would continue?
Thank you, councilmember Burt. I think that there's just a couple of things. Obviously, we would, I mean, this would, I wouldn't just call it seed funding towards the project, but you can see there's, we would have to close the gap with CIP funding. I think Trish's point about conversation directly with the East Palo Alto staff is something that is a follow-up that we ought to do also, not only about what the potential design was, but whether or not there's any potential contribution at all that they might want to assist us with. And then I think we would just have to, again, be sure that we were cobbling it together and putting something together in the CIP. You know, I think one of the advantages to doing this is, if you're interested, is it does sort of signal that you're interested in seeing something happen in this project, and it makes it easier for us when we bring the CIP forward.
Well, I'll just say that reckoning back to when we went through the approval on the Edgewood Plaza project, we recognized that there were a lot of problems with the way this project had historically been laid out. We addressed some of them in terms of the ingress and egress improvements and the turning conflicts on to Embarcadero. But this pedestrian element is an important part of this, and I want to see Edgewood Plaza be complete and become a better amenity, and I think this would be an additional step to it. So I will offer a substitute motion that the, to apply the penalty toward the design of a sidewalk project along West Bay Shore.
I'll second.
Okay, that was seconded by councilmember Shepherd. Vice Mayor Shepherd.
So I think I've really spoken to my principal reasons for doing so. I think it's money well spent and funds that would be directed to the project that, where the funds come from.
Vice Mayor Shepherd, you wish to speak to your second?
Yeah, I, I've found this to be sort of the cart before the horse. You know, assessing a fee, fine, I'm glad that we didn't take up how we were going to handle that fine when we were going through the FEI, the expansion to the EIR in order to try to capture the incident that happened out there. I do understand the connectivity it has to a historic building, and yet, at the same time, this really doesn't do much for any of the historic buildings the city owns. And I actually wouldn't mind seeing Policy and Services take up a conversation about that, whether or not we should do that going forward when we have to take out a public building, a historic building. And this will actually start the seed money for, obviously, not building out a sidewalk, because that would take a lot of money, but it would do exactly what councilmember Burt is saying. It would finish off this design, and then we could figure out how the neighborhoods felt about it and not, and we would have that type of civic engagement. And I think that that would be an important thing to pursue, and then finish out that design and actually have a possible project. So until we have a more developed historic preservation fund, I would rather see this actually in operation out in the community right now, making this a better project.
Councilmember Price.
Thank you. I will be supporting the substitute motion for all the, and I concur with all the comments made by my colleagues. It seems like this is a project directly adjacent to the subject property. It makes a lot of sense. I look forward to a future conversation about the importance of a historic rehabilitation or restoration fund, and how that could be utilized.
Councilmember Klein.
Well, I've gone, this is a close question for me, and actually, I have a different view than any of the expressed so far. I have trouble with the original motion, because it just leaves to another day what that public building should be. And I think that for the amount of money we have at stake here, that we ought to make a decision. So I would offer an amendment that says that instead of, for, instead of for the historic preservation of a public building, for the improvements set forth in paragraph two on page 787, describing the improvements that would be necessary at Lucy Stern Community Center.
So I would support and second that, but I'm a little confused procedurally here. Maybe it's getting late, but we have a substitute motion.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And you're amending the main motion?
I'm, right.
So I'm going to support when we get to that, but let's wait.
That's what I, we'll support when we get there. But I would like to have some nods by the makers of the motion, because if they want to leave it like it is right now.
Yes, if you want to make it specific, am I correct?
Yes. If they're not willing to make it specific, then I'll have to go with a substitute motion.
So I heard they are willing to make it specific.
I'm fine with it, yeah.
I just want to speak briefly to why I can't vote for the substitute motion, and sorry for being improper from a procedural standpoint. I'm very sympathetic to the idea that we need to do something, but the dollars are out of proportion. This is going to be a major project, or at least a sort of major project. We're going to spend at least $500,000, my guess is more, because I have a feeling that we're going to discover the problems are greater. So that just applying the money to study this doesn't seem to me to be the right way to go. I want us to make this really a capital improvement project on its own, and so we can get a lot more input before we go much further. I was disappointed in the results of the survey, where only six people responded. I recognize that it's difficult to get people responding, but we only had one person turn out tonight as well. So clearly, we do not have the attention of the neighborhood yet, and I think we're going to have to do a lot more work before we really start spending money on it. And I don't, I think Trish Mulvey has made a very good point about the parking. I don't want to see us lose any of the parking, but to keep the parking and have a sidewalk, it makes it even a more complicated project, and I'm not quite sure how we're going to do that. Whether it's asphalt, well, that's an interesting idea, but are we sort of making this a second level project? I don't know any of those answers, and I think we've got a lot more work to do, so I would prefer it to go in a different way.
All right. Seeing no for the lights. Oh, sorry, councilmember Berman.
I agree with everything councilman Klein just said.
Okay. So if we could vote on the substitute motion?
The substitute is Pat's.
This is the substitute motion. This is Pat's motion.
This is the sidewalk motion.
Yes, sidewalk motion. And that fails on a, one, two, three, five to three vote. Okay, let's go back to the main motion. And then councilmember Klein, you had an amendment you wish to offer.
Yes, and councilmembers Ness and Schmidt noted, yes, that we changed the wording from historic preservation of a public building to historic preservation at Lucy Stern, as set forth in paragraph two on page 780, 797.
And that's accepted by both of them. All right, seeing no for the lights, if we could vote on the board?
I'm sorry, is page 797?
797.
Yeah, and that passes with councilmember Burt voting no, and councilmember Holman being recused. All right.
Subject to our rules, I would move that we continue item number 18 to future date. I don't see the urgency for addressing that at this time.
What is council's pleasure? That's the smoking.
I'm voting to push on through. I hope it won't take very long.
Push on through? I'm going to do a quick straw poll. Who wants to push on through? Raise your hand. One, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We'll push on through. Yeah, I'll introduce, I'm just trying to say if we should do Trish first, but I'll introduce the colleagues' memo. So this colleagues' memo came out of conversations with my colleagues and conversations with Dennis Burns about the enforceability of our current ban. If you look on the wall over there, the purple shows where smoking is probably banned, but there's all these different voids because of the issue of you have to measure from a doorway, which makes it really difficult to enforce. No one really knows if you're within 25 feet of a doorway or not. And so what the colleagues' memo does is says, let's take a comprehensive approach at this, let's make it enforceable, and let's look and benchmark what other jurisdictions are doing in their downtowns, and let's go to Policy and Services, let's do outreach to the business community, let's do outreach to our citizens, and let's, you know, take a systematic approach to this and look at it in Policy and Services. And that's the intent of the colleagues' memo. Yeah, let's go out to the speaker, and then we'll come back. Trish Mulvey.
Thanks again, Mr. Mayor. I spent all day Friday getting to talk trash at the Bay Area Trash Summit and with a number of your environmental services staff. And this was my first opportunity to really hear some excellent speakers talking about cigarette butts, not only as a toxic hazard, but how other communities are dealing with them. So first and foremost, I support your colleagues' memo, want to thank you for doing it, and hope you all will support it. I'd like personally to know who the staff is that'll be assigned to working with them so I can be in touch with them. But for your knowledge, tonight, excellent presentations from the city of San Rafael talking about their experiences. They had a great big, it looks like a parking meter, but it's like seven feet tall, that they fed cigarettes butts to at a penny apiece, and raised $2,000 for St. Vincent de Paul. Just an absolutely incredible presentation by eight students at St. Paul's Episcopal Middle School in Oakland by, like merit, about their experiences counting cigarette butts at bus stops and around a really pretty fountain. I don't know how many of you have looked at the cigarette butts that accumulate around the fountain at California Avenue, but staff tells me it's significant. The one point that I wanted to say, really though, is that smoking isn't going to go away. It's, you all know, it's an addiction, and it is what it is, and it's awful, but it is. So especially in asking for staff input, coming back to Policy and Services, to ask about, oh, things like how to deal with where the smokers are going to go, and make sure that you have cigarette butt containers for them to use when they go there, and how it's going to be enforced, and not just make the assumption, because you say this area is smoke-free, that that makes this really go away, because it won't. And the other message I'd say, in, there's, the speaker who used to be an assistant United States Surgeon General has a website called SigWaste.org, and the importance of educational materials that include help for smokers in ways that they can reduce and eventually stop smoking. So again, thanks.
All right, coming back to the council, I'm going to then move that we, the city council, direct staff to the recommendation that's set forth on the page, one of the colleagues' memo, which is proceed to the Policy and Services Committee for policy discussion, and a recommendation of the full council to expand the city's outdoor smoking ban in the downtown and California Avenue business districts, conduct outreach to downtown and California Avenue residents, businesses, and property owners for input on expanding the city's current ban on outdoor smoking in certain areas, including California Avenue and University Avenue, and possibly other streets in the downtown cores, and benchmark other jurisdictions' outdoor smoking ban ordinance in downtown cores. That's seconded by councilmember Holman. I think I've pretty much spoken to this. Councilmember Holman, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, I'm happy to be a part of this, and, I mean, everybody knows that smoking is an unhealthy, unhealthy habit, that fortunately, there aren't that, isn't that large of a population Palo Alto that does smoke, but those that do, do have an impact on others, and it is a health impact. Passive smoke is a health consideration, so I'm happy to support this.
Councilmember Price.
I did, oh, I was going to comment about the public health issues and the dangers of secondhand smoke. I agree with the other comments made.
Councilmember Berman?
I'm sorry?
Councilmember Berman?
Nope.
Oh, nope. Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, this comes at a bad time for me. I spent the weekend reading 16th-century history about the wars of religion in Europe, and they killed.
Me too. It was only 30 years, come on.
They killed more people in those wars than in the 20th-century wars in Europe. And it was about, finally, at the end, the Treaty of Westphalia, all the politicians got together and said, you know, it's not the role of government to tell people what to think, or what to believe, or even how to act, as long as they don't hurt other people. You know, toleration becomes a key part of what governments do. And while I agree, smoking is nasty, mean, uncomfortable, I think medical research says that personal smoking is bad, that in indoor places where people congregate, it is unhealthy. In public parks where kids are playing and exercising, it's reasonable to say no. But on public thoroughfares, I have not seen any medical study that says walking down a street with someone smoking leads to either lung cancer or respiratory disease. And, you know, I'd recommend, if the Policy and Services Committee can do a literature review and see if there's any impact on people's health from smoking on a sidewalk, walking on a sidewalk, I'd do it. Otherwise, I think the role of local government is toleration and acceptance of things that we don't necessarily like.
Councilmember Burt.
Well, the background isn't exactly the same as councilmember Schmidt's, but I'm going to go ahead and support forwarding this to Policy and Services, but with some caution for similar reasons to councilmember Schmidt. Smoking on University Avenue annoys me probably as much as it annoys anybody here. I don't like it, and I'd prefer not to be around it, but there's a lot of things that annoy me, and I want to be careful about legislating against things that annoy me. And it's one thing if it's a health risk, it's another thing if it's a personal preference. And so I'll be interested in seeing the comparisons other cities, interested in seeing if we can sculpt this in a way that is not heavy-handed, and I, you know, the outreach parts, I think, are purposeful. But I do think we should be cautious about legislating against things that aren't our values.
All right, seeing no for the lights, if we could vote on the board? And that passes on an eight to one vote with councilmember Schmidt voting no. Meeting is adjourned.